Let me know if I can help you.
Absolutely, but thank you so much.
Mr. Stephanie, are you available?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think about time to get the invocation all he'll be here.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the order of the Effingham County Board of Commissioners meeting this March 5th, 2024 at 5:02 PM. Have a roll call. Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Burdette.
Here.
Mr. Corbett's here. Mr. Deloach is on his way, so we'll note him for the record when he does walk in, but we'll go ahead and begin since we do have a quorum. Mr. Loper, not present. Mr. Kiefer.
Here.
And he is present, so we do have a quorum. I'm asking everyone if they please stand with us and as we have the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to our flag. Gracious Father, we are so thankful again to be here tonight among friends and among this leadership to hear the business of this county. We pray for your wisdom, that you would grant us your wisdom as we listen, as we make those decisions that will both please you and bless the constituents of our county. So guide us in this discussion and these decisions, we pray. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our agenda before us tonight. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and board members, we do have some changes.
Okay.
We have received a request from the applicant for items number three and four under Planning Board. It is Robert McCorkle as agent for Mark G. and Mary D. and others to rezone 40 of 280.5 acres located on Old River Road from AR1 to I-1. The applicant has requested these items be removed.
Removed or?
Yes, sir, removed.
Removed, so they're no longer gonna be even on a future agenda item?
Possibly, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But the request is for it to be removed.
Okay.
Additionally, and someone correct me if this is incorrect, but my understanding is we are removing new business number two, three, four, and five. These are all ordinance amendments that will be presented to you at our next work session, which will be on March 19.
I don't think that's gonna be correct. I was discussing with staff, I know the planning board has not taken a vote, but they've had their public hearings, so we may have to have a little brief discussion before we decide. Are there some items on there? Steve, you wanna come to the microphone?
Yes, sir.
And with attorney's ruling, we can see, I understand they have had the hearing and there's some things that we need to go ahead and act on tonight, and if they should make any other recommendations, we could consider them at another meeting, but you?
That is correct. And so they've all been advertised for public hearings and for public hearings, both at the planning board and here. The business license and occupation tax, there was discussion with the county attorney to have that at the workshop, at the next workshop, but we've advertised a public hearing for that.
Public hearing.
So we can have a public hearing and we can push it.
But not take a vote on it maybe?
Right, exactly. If he's okay with that.
All right, Mr. Lee, what he's asking is, what he's asking is since the planning board had their hearing on item two, which is a business license, since you already advertised, do our public here tonight, but I withhold the vote till we hear back from the planning board. They've already had their public hearing, but they wanna see if they have any comments. Is that okay? And then also in item three and four, I think they agreed to table it at the public hearing.
So four's been passed by them, five has been passed by them.
Okay.
And article three was, we needed it and they passed it, and I think the county attorney, I'm not gonna speak for him, had some questions about it.
Do you have some comments on number three?
Well, my concern was two and three, to have more discussion on those items. I don't know that it matters that the planning board has voted and approved the ordinances. Those were the two that I had concerns with, the others, I guess I don't have an issue with those, but I think we need more discussion on the sketch plan and the business license. I need more time to review that.
All right, so you're asking if we could maybe do the public hearing nights, we're gonna have to redo that, but not take a vote?
No.
No public hearing?
Because I think there's gonna be revisions on our end if we have this at the workshop.
Okay.
And then we can bring it back, so if you wanna table this for four weeks.
All right, go ahead. Is anything from the staff?
Would this then have to go back to the planning board?
No. No, because we're gonna table it tonight to a future date.
Okay, so the original public hearing at the planning board is still good?
Because technically ordinances aren't public hearings.
Okay, all right.
Just according to our policy, I think we have a public hearing through them. It goes through them first, I think.
Yeah, well, it's a public meeting, it goes through them and then here.
All right, so you recommend we do not do a public hearing tonight on two and three. Is staff in agreement with that?
I'm just thinking if you have the meeting.
He's saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what these changes would be, so I can't tell you. So we? Yeah, our only issue, the business license, I get because it's a taxing kind of thing and it takes some washing out. The sketch plan slash preliminary plan issue, we've got some stuff that is coming forward. Either we delay that because we're gonna need this in place to do those, and right now you don't necessarily have a requirement for anything that is non-residential to submit a preliminary plan or a sketch plan to you like you like to see. That's why we wanted this one to come forward, but if he doesn't like it, then he doesn't like it.
It's only my recommendation. If you wanna move forward with it tonight, that's well within your purview to do that. I mean, maybe this discussion should have been had earlier today, but it's up to you.
Yeah, I don't wanna get us in a bind on anything we're working on at a staff level, but I would like to hear the comments of our attorney at the same time, with two weeks really put a damp?
That's fine.
Do that then, I'd like to honor what?
We could have the workshop and then approve it at the next meeting possibly.
Right. And you're saying I don't have to advertise for it, Ms. Clerk?
I'm sorry?
You're saying I don't have to advertise for a ordinance amendment?
You do advertise, I was just saying it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
All right, so?
So I've advertised it for this, I just need?
You need to advertise it for the next meeting.
No, we'll just table it till the next meeting.
Right.
And your cover, your advertisement was for?
That's what I was wondering. That's what I was?
If we table it, it'll cover the next meeting.
Correct.
That's, is that okay?
Sounds good.
That's, we just wanna make sure we didn't?
I'm on an understanding page.
Thank you.
Any other corrections or additions to the agenda?
Um, no, sir.
All right, so if I understand it correctly, we need a motion to approve the agenda with the tabling of items number two and three to, what's the date of that meeting?
Do we need to table those when they come up?
We're already doing it, let's go ahead and get it down.
Okay, well, we just need to be date certain on it.
Yeah, she's gonna give you the date now.
It's March 19.
To 3/19, okay? So we need a motion to approve the agenda with the tabling of items two and three and a new business to March 19, and then the removal of items number, and I'll be there in a second.
Four and five.
Items three and four under the planning board section.
Two and? So moved.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Burdette for the agenda as I just stated. Have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Kiefer, and before we vote, if we'll note that Mr. Deloach has come, so we have addition to our quorum already, and with that we can all vote, all in favor of the agenda as presented with the changes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, the agenda is set.
What do we decide on items four and five?
We're gonna hear those.
Under planning board?
Nope, new business.
We're gonna consider.
We're gonna move forward with those.
We will hear those, okay.
Yeah, just table the two. All right, now the minutes, consideration to approve the February 20, 2024 work session and regular session minutes to have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as read.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Floyd, to approve as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. Welcome everyone tonight, sorry to take a little time to get through that agenda approval, it's a little more complicated than normal. Comments shall pertain to the agenda items only tonight, should you wish to make remarks, come to the podium, clearly state your name, and speaking to the microphone to the items that you wanna speak to, if you can keep your comments to two or three minutes, that really helps as we wanna have everybody a chance to speak to the items. All the documents for this meeting are located in the clerk's office or on the board commissioner's website, hope you've all had a chance to review that and are ready for the appropriate time to discuss. Now, I'm gonna interject a presentation tonight, I hope that's okay with my clerk. I met with our Superior Court Judge, Judge Muldrer, this week ago, and he's got some, about five minutes, he wanted to highlight what's happening and something to do with the court systems, I'm gonna let him come share. Judge, would you come share with our board? We appreciate your good service in our community.
Feel like I'm standing in a metal detector or something right here. Thank you for having me, Chairman. I am Michael Muldrer, as he said, I'm one of the four Superior Court Judges, and I wanna first start off by thanking you for your service, and I wanna thank you for all that you've done for the Superior Court, the Gichi Circuit, and the Juvenile Court of this circuit. Anytime we've ever need anything, you've been very responsive, you've helped us in every way we can, when we've ever identified a need, and I just wanna commend you for that, and thank you on behalf of myself, Judge P., Judge Thompson, Judge Bennett, as well as Juvenile Court Judge Donald Shepard. But we couldn't do this without your support, or at least not do it well, without all of your support, and y'all have always been there for us, and I wanna thank you for that. I was here a couple of years ago, I think, and shared with you kind of what was going on, I don't try to burden you every year, but there has been a little change. I first wanna let you know that a snapshot as of February 13th, we had 60 participants throughout the circuit, 20 of those were in Effingham County. When we started growing so big as a accountability court, drug court, and mental health court, we asked Judge Bennett to come on board and start helping with that, and he readily agreed, he got the training, the same training I've been through, and he has been conducting the accountability court here in Effingham County for several years now. It helped provide for the people in Effingham County that didn't have to come to Bullock County, and it really was able to expand. I think when he came down here, we had 12, now we got 20, but that number, these numbers always shift, right now we may have 65. We have about a 60% completion rate, it's up from 50% either we've gotten better at our job or we're able to identify people better to bring them into the court. It's all voluntary based, but we're proud of that number. As you, I don't know if you know much about substance abuse disorder, but if a provider has like a 15 or 20% success rate, that's very high, and we've got a 60%, and I think it helps when you have a judge that's able to kinda keep them on the straight and narrow, at least that's what they tell me. They got to get some of my, people got together and they got a wristband that said WWJMD on it. You've heard of like What Would Jesus Do? This one was for? J, M, D on it. You've heard of like What Would Jesus Do? This one's, was for What Would Judge Mulder Do? So, uh, I try to keep them at the foot of the cross, so to speak. But, um, I, I think, you know, we are able to help a lot of people out down here in Effingham County and throughout the circuit. Our biggest issue is transportation. Uh, it's real hard for some of these people and the struggles they're doing to get transportation to, get their services they need. Uh, we got a federal grant that's supposed to be helping with that, but we're, we're not having too good a progress with that. And if any of you have got any suggestions, we'd be glad to, to hear from you. But the main reason I, I wanted to come is anytime there's a big change, I want y'all to be the first to know about it. When I took over drug court, uh, mental health court from Chief Judge Woodrum back about seven and a half years ago, um, it was at ten, the match that all the counties would do to the grant was ten percent. And then I took, then I started drug court shortly thereafter with a twen- ten percent match and with y'all's assistance. And then, um, about three years ago, it went up to twelve percent. Y'all kind of know how government works, so you got a little creep there. Well, now it's gone up to fifteen percent, but I still, still think y'all are getting a lot of bang for your buck considering fifteen percent out of the hundred. Now, if you look on the, uh, single sheet here right inside the book I gave you, and this is the official accountability court annual report that covers all the counties in the state. I think there are one hundred and eighty or two hundred or something courts within the state. We have two of them. But, uh, our grant application for drug court was three hundred and sixty-four thousand. Um, last year it was three hundred and four thousand, and we got, they, we received two hundred and fifteen. So you're seeing we're only getting sixty, seventy percent of what we asked for. Um, mental health court, we're asking for two hundred and five thousand. Last year we got a hundred and ninety-two. Uh, we asked for a hundred and ninety-two and received a hundred and forty-nine. Most of this, we have three employees, a administrator, and then a caseworker, and then a lady that works part-time helping with the, uh, collect all of the urine tests, and that is the key to this, is constantly keeping urine tests, keeping them accountable. That's what's called accountability court. And, um, surveillance. We have officers in each county, two in Bullock, one here, one in Scraven, one in Jenkins, that go out, make sure these people are home, you know, abide by their curfew and stuff like that, and they give them drug tests there. So that's actually the bulk of our cost is surveillance and drug testing. Uh, as you can see, we're only getting sixty, seventy percent. Uh, we're able to fill the gap with a grant we got from the federal government, uh, for a hundred thousand a year, so that helps. And that's, and y'all don't have to match. The counties do not have to match the federal grant. So all in all, I believe, uh, the fifteen percent, and you can see that's, the fifteen percent is, is like, uh, if they gave us everything, which they certainly won't do, would be, uh, twenty-four thousand in Effingham and for drug court and thirteen thousand for mental health court. But it will be significantly less than that, which your match will be. And to kind of brag about my staff and what we're doing here, we received, uh, a special, uh, spotlight, they called it, on page eleven of your annual report. This went out to the entire state. And, uh, I'm a very physical conservative, and I've never wanted this to, you know, build an empire or anything, trying to keep, you know, keep it as physically responsible as we possibly can. And one way of doing that is most places, each court has its own, uh, coordinator, own, all their own workers and everything, but I combine mental health and drug court and what we call the O'Geech accountability court, and have saved the, uh, citizens a lot of money, and they pointed out, they're suggesting that other places do that too. That's number eleven. Operating Grant Spotlight, O'Geech Judicial Circuit, so, um, I don't know if I needed, any questions y'all may have for me?
I think it's a great court for sure. I mean, I know it's something the sheriff really wanted to see done too, and it's giving people really another opportunity.
Yeah, we, we try hard, but, uh, of everybody that's trying to help mental health and, and drug addiction, I feel that we're probably the most least qualified. I mean, we're good at putting people in jail and dividing pots and pans on divorces, but being a mental health counselor and a drug counselor is not in my wheelhouse, so to speak. But I've learned a lot over the years. We have to go to training a couple of times a year and everything, so, uh, we're doing what we can. And Karen McLean, that's my coordinator. She's doing an amazing job. I don't know what we're going to do. Nobody's indispensable, but she's doggone close. But anyway.
Any questions for me?
Any questions or concerns? Anything I can explain?
I can imagine the, the, um, what it says is on the public safety side.
Yeah.
You know, that's, you're really.
You know, I've been doing this seven years, and I never thought of it at the way, when I was eating lunch, I've always want to give y'all a warning when I'm asking for a little more money. That's why I met with, with Tim Callanan and Wesley the other day for, Wesley Corbett the other day for lunch, to let him know about the fifteen percent from, from twelve percent. And I was telling him a story about how this man, that's, he's actually from Scraven County, comes to the Bullock County Drug Court and asks him how he's doing. He had tears in his eyes. And he said, this is the first time I've ever saved any money. He's in his thirties. He said, I've saved up a thousand dollars from being in your court. He said, every time I've ever had a dime, I spent it on drugs since I was fifteen years old. Few months, and we all clapped and we were proud of him. A few months later, he came back. I mean, he comes every twice a month, but he's come back, and I said, how's it going? And he kind of welled up, had tears in his eyes, and he said, for the first time in my life, I got two boys that are fourteen or fifteen, and I'm finally getting to know them. I thought I knew them, but I never did. And he said that's, and he was, you know, tearing up. And Wesley pointed out that this has not only helped him and helped his sons, but if he hadn't have come into drug court and we'd been able to help him, his children would probably be following in the same steps. So it's not just the people we're helping. It's their families and their children for no telling how many generations, so we are proud of that.
Not intangible. She can't measure. I remind the board that, you know, uh, prior to, um, with Mulder coming, uh, to the bench, uh, we didn't have juvenile court, if I'm correct, and we didn't have the, uh, drug court.
That's right.
And mental health court. And so these are, these are proactive, preventive courts that are addressing issues in a lot of ways, so great changes. Appreciate all you do, and let us know. It's a small price to pay for what, uh, might, you'd say, improve public safety for our whole community and people's lives.
Yeah.
Appreciate your heart for it as well. You can tell it's authentic, and you really care about these, these people.
Don't need to do it if you don't care.
It's good to have judges that have hearts but are strong as well. Appreciate you.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for your attention. Y'all have a great day.
All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda now. There are three items on our consent agenda. I'll read them and then I'll entertain a motion. These are items that we won't have a discussion, uh, a debate, but you can, uh, remove one if you want to discuss it, and we'll move it to the new business. Here they are. Item one, consideration to approve to renew the mutual aid agreement with the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty of Animals. Item number two, consideration to approve submission of a grant application to Firehouse Sub, uh, Public Safety Foundation. And three is consideration to approve to ratify and affirm a supplemental funding request from Atlas Technical Consultants to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Kiefer, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. Move to unfinished business. We have one item. Um, this is a second reading, consideration to approve the second reading to amend part two, Official Code, Chapter forty-two, Section forty-two dash seven, uh, firearms of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. First reading was on, uh, February sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Do you have a motion to approve the second reading?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Certainly. Motion, Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette, to approve the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. That'll move us to our new business. If you can't hear me tonight, just get my attention, raise my hand. I've got some, a little bit of size on the downside of it, but hopefully my voice will hold up through the evening. First item on the new business, uh, consideration to approve resolution twenty-four dash oh twelve in celebration of Allen Burns' years of service with the Georgia Coastal Regional Commission, and Miss Stephanie Johnson's going to present a, uh, resolution that she has prepared for us to honor him tonight.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, you all are familiar. It's at the request of Commissioner Loper, who serves on the CRC Council. Mr. Burns has been the director over there for over sixteen years and has done a great deal of work as outlined in the resolution, which reads as such. Whereas numerous public servants are in government service across our region from the local level up to the federal level, the Board of Commissioners of Effingham County, Georgia strives to support and acknowledge those who perform outstanding stewardship to our county and our neighboring affiliates. And whereas Mr. Allen Burns has held the post of Executive Director for the Georgia Coastal Regional Commission, the second fastest growing region in the state for sixteen years, this commission serves ten counties and thirty-five cities. And whereas Mr. Burns has an impressive background in planning and community, community and economic development dating back to nineteen eighty. And whereas he has received a plethora of awards and recognitions to include the NATO Initiative Award, of which he was a multi-year recipient, the Palmetto Partnership Award from the governor, the Catalyst Geospatial Excellence Award from the National States Geographic Information Council. And whereas Mr. Burns was elected to many commissions, including Secretary, Georgia Association of Regional Commissioners, and Vice President, Georgia Association of Regional Commissioners. Whereas some of his countless accomplishments as Executive Director for the Georgia Coastal Regional Commission stems from initiating prayer and the pledge to start meetings, implementation of the first regional coordinated transportation system in Georgia, led efforts for first state ride Esri contract for Georgia information systems for all regional commissions, and also developed and started the first regional plan and planned and introduced the Georgia segment of the East Coast Greenway. And now therefore be it resolved, we the sitting commissioners of Effingham County, Georgia, recognize the many successes of and celebrate Mr. Allen Burns's service to Effingham County, the entire state of Georgia. And further be it resolved, a copy of this resolution will be a part of the Effingham County Archives.
Uh, is it possible that our delegate to the CRC could take that resolution to the next meeting and?
He will be. He will be taking it to the next meeting to present.
Present it publicly.
Next Wednesday, the thirteenth.
Outstanding. All right, any, any question or comments from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Kiefer, to approve the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. We'll go to item number four because item two and three have been tabled at the agenda approval. Item number four is a, and you say this does not have to be a public hearing, item number four?
That's correct.
Okay. This is consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend part two, Official Code, Appendix C, uh, of Article Five, Table of Permitted Uses of Effingham County Code of Ordinances. Mr. Steve, you going to present that?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Steve Kandler, Director of Development Services. Uh, so in the packet, um, are just a list of either additions or removals to what we passed about a month or so ago. Um, so these are things we realized either we left out or we needed to add. Uh, the first one is the ready mixed concrete plant currently in I one to move to the I two, which is the heavy. So that was something we talked about at the meeting. We do that, so that's in there. Uh, we wanted to add an R two column, which is both, um, attached townhomes and duplexes, so that's another residential option. We have, um, so many requests for tiny homes that the place that we want to put them is a conditional use in an R four. Um, so we might be having that coming forward, so you might see your first preliminary plat- with that. Um, and I think the definition of a tiny home is five ninety-five, four ninety-five, some, somewhere around four hundred to six hundred square feet. Uh, the next one is, uh, we're going to remove business use from a PD zoning district. Um, that really doesn't apply most of the time. Um, because rural is not PD. You see PD as something that they, they make for something else. Uh, rural business has a conditional use in an AR one and AR two zoning district. We're going to add that. We've done that before, so now we're just putting it in the table permitted uses. Um, uh, we're going to delete the retail category, plant gardens and outdoor nurseries because it's a duplicate. We've already got it in there. It was just in there twice. Um, we're going to delete all commercial agricultural from AR two. There's just no room to do it. Um, and then insert the land use airfields. It's a conditional use in AR one. We've got one that we currently have that's a conditional use in AR one out on Mock Road. Um, so we didn't want to make it a non-conforming use, so we put that in there. Uh, add food processing to a B three zoning district as conditional. Some of the things that we're going to have coming forward, that's going to come into play. Um, and then add land use, uh, as golf courses, a conditional use in an R one, and R two, and R three, R four, R five, PDR, and a permitted use in a B one, B two, B three. I don't know how much of that's actually going to happen because of the size of the property that's going to be required. Um, but we thought we would do it as a conditional use in all the residential zones and permitted use in B one, B two, B three, but it's going to take fifteen, twenty acres in a B one, B two, B three to do that. Um, so those are, um, the changes that are being made to what you saw the last time.
Okay.
So no more talk on chickens?
Um, so chickens are coming. We're going to do everything that's hooked next, so it's coming.
Very good. Any other discussion or questions?
I think all that makes sense, straightforward. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading.
All right, you had a motion to approve the first reading by, uh, Mr. Deloach. That second from Mr. Burdette, I hear that?
Yes, sir.
Second from Mr. Burdette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously.
Um, is it up there? Okay.
All right, item number five is consideration to approve the first regiment ordinance to amend Chapter sixty-two of the Effingham County Code Ordinances. So you want to continue to take that one?
Um, so, uh, me again. So I want to, um, go over this. So we have two areas of the ordinance that talk about signs. Um, one is Chapter sixty-two, which is in the Code of Ordinances, and one is three point three eight. That is in the zoning code, so it's in part two, you know, the whole zoning code. So, um, sixty-two, Chapter sixty-two really was designed originally for interstate signs only. So I think at some point in time, something was happening along the interstate, and somebody said, hey, let's write an ordinance about it. It does cover a few other things in there, but the majority of it is about interstate signs. And it also doesn't talk about temporary signs like we're experiencing all over the county. So you know, the, the small frame signs that you see all up and down the roads that we are in right of ways, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, s- Chapter sixty-two, the majority of it conflicts with what we have in three point
Three.
Three. So we want, and I've got that right here. I don't know why I don't read it, but, so we want to just remove sixty-two altogether from the code. Um, and then all the signs, um, ordinances that we have will just be three point three eight. Um, and that will cover everything. So we've gone through both sides. It's all good. We just need to get rid of sixty-two because it conflicts so much with what we tried to do and what code enforcement tries to do. Does that make sense?
Well, it does, but let me ask, uh, some help from my clerk here. The way it reads is we're amending Chapter sixty-two. Are we amending it or deleting it?
Well, I mean, even if you are deleting it, you're, you're amending it, but it's.
Yeah.
The word is really, um.
I had this, this.
When it's, when it's written, um, for the purposes of codification, it will note delete in its entirety.
Okay.
But it's amended, but it's still an amendment.
It'll show the citations for the history, so that, that number has to remain in there.
That's right.
So you're actually amending it.
So the amendment is to delete
Ran into that this week.
Uh, Chapter sixty-two.
Right.
The content, but the section will remain.
I got you.
And you, and somebody will come twenty years from now and be able to read it? You might still be. And you, and somebody will come twenty years from now and be able to read it. You might still be here. I'm on, but you will. But it might say, hey, this is the reason why this was gone.
All right, that's clear enough. So do I have a motion to approve an amendment to the Code of Ordinances? Chapter sixty-two signs deletion.
Make a motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach to approve the second first reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes unanimously.
Thank you very, very much.
I learn every day. I was trying to figure out how do you amend something you're deleting. But now I understand. Item number six, consideration to approve a proposal from Pond and Company for the Blue Jay Road Corridor Study and Concept Design.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Allison Bruton, Procurement and Capital Projects Manager. So staff did request this proposal from Pond. It is for the Blue Jay Road Corridor Study and Concept Design. And the boundaries of the project are, were adjusted to include the city of Rankin portion of Blue Jay, which I believe is Ninth Street at their request. And they did cover, or they did offer to cover that portion of the proposal as well for the fee. The Pond will evaluate Blue Jay Road from Sand Hill to twenty-one to determine the improvements that are needed based on current and future use. Staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions?
So there's no, so everything outside of the two roundabouts. We know we've got the roundabout at Blue Jay and the Parkway, and then we'll have the roundabout at Blue Jay and Hodgville. So everything outside of that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes unanimously. Move to item number seven, the courthouse realignment. Consideration to approve a proposal of an additional service request from Alliance Consulting Engineers for Courthouse Road Realignment Design Project.
Yes, sir. So we did request these additional services be added to Alliance's current contract with us for the courthouse road realignment. This includes a lighting design for a future roundabout and design of left-hand turn lanes on McCall to account for the future light on twenty-one. Staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions and discussions on this item or a motion for alternative?
Can I ask Steve a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Steve, did, I know we talked previously about this, but I know the, the owners, I guess, of the mobile home park there. I know they have some questions. I know y'all were supposed to meet. Did, did you get those questions answered for those guys?
Okay. We did meet with them. We've got the road alignment there. We've got where they're going to be able to put things back that they removed before. Very good meeting. We're going to meet again tomorrow just to make sure we're clear, but they've got everything. And they've actually started to move the replacements in.
They've got a lot of their homes in there already.
Yeah, they got six. So, but, but it is, they're very comfortable. We're very comfortable with it.
It, it hasn't fully been resolved, but we're waiting. But what they're doing is they're kind of replacing the units around where the future road would go in as we determine how we, the exact plat of, of land that the county is going to need. Because we got to figure out how that disturbs any sort of existing septic systems. But, but with the way we've worked it is that they will start in the areas kind of north and south of it while we resolve the issue in the center.
Okay. And so they're able to move them in while we get that.
You said septic systems. I'm surprised they're not going to tie into the sewer.
Yeah, it's, Springfield currently has a moratorium on sewer. And so that, that, I think they did look into that, but they, but they weren't able to at, at this time.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, discussion, or a motion for alternative one?
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes unanimously. Takes us to item number eight and a new business, consideration to approve change order three for McWright LLC for Contract Twenty-three dash ITB dash oh thirty-one related to the renovation expansion of the EMS headquarters and the construction renovation of the prison maintenance building.
Yes, sir. So this is change order three. This does include power determinations to overhead doors, four of which are at the prison maintenance building and three at the EMS location, as well as an extension for conduits at the prison maintenance building to account for future expansion. It was determined it was better to do that now than try to work it in, in the future when we expand the building. So staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you. Any question or discussion for Ms. Allison? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes unanimously. Item number nine, consideration to approve a proposal from Inspire Placemaking Collective Incorporated for a corridor design standard.
Yes, sir. So this is the same company that's doing the comprehensive plan and ordinance updates along with development services. This proposal was requested to prepare, to prepare development and design standards for two different areas in Effingham County. One being Hodgville Road and the other being State Route twenty-one from the county line on the Port Wentworth side to the Springfield city limits. And staff recommends alternative one.
To the Rankin city limits.
What's the time turnaround on this study?
I'm sorry, was it Rankin city limits or Springfield?
Kind of needed yesterday. That's what I was.
Yeah, is it between Rankin and Springfield or just south of Rankin?
No, I, we're, because.
It's all the way up.
I was going to ask that.
When I read it, it said, Fort River to the city and then north of the city to Springfield.
What's that?
It's to Rankin and then north of Rankin to Springfield is what I read.
Are we including Springfield?
It's Spring, I don't, it's not supposed, she might have put that in by accident, but it's not including Springfield.
Yeah, because we were simply going to follow whatever the design standards at Springfield had existing.
Right.
Right, but it says.
And so we weren't going to pay them to redo them.
Okay, we were just going to stay consistent with Springfield.
Yes.
Correct.
That makes sense.
I just read what it said. It's twenty-one county line to Port, from Port Wentworth through Rankin to Springfield city limits.
Well, it shouldn't be Springfield. It should be from the county line to the Rankin city limits on twenty-one.
And, and, and north of that, we'll just adopt whatever Springfield has.
That's correct. We would mimic whatever Springfield has.
Okay. As long as this contract knows they're not doing that and.
We'll let them know.
Yeah. It's, it's on an hourly, so.
I don't know if they've got a price in there for that, that these come out.
It, it, it's based on an hourly, so we can remove that.
Okay.
We can remove that section.
All right, sounds good. So we can move forward.
Most.
Any other question, discussion? A motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Second by Mr. Kiefer. First by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes unanimously. Item number ten, consideration to approve change order number one for Platinum Paving and Concrete LLC for Fiscal Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four La Mee Construction Project.
Yes, sir. So there had been some concern between Robert Civil Engineering and the Thomason Hutton Group regarding the blowing of cement in Belmont Glen related to, and relating to its traffic staging and potential construction impacts. So after additional core samples were taken and some reviewed by both groups, they did recommend a change in scope, which actually results in a deduction in the contract price. So staff recommends alternative one.
Okay. Now this, yes, this jeopardize integrity of, of the material or base or whatever. If they're taking away the concrete, this is not jeopardizing the integrity of anything else.
No, and that was our concern when they came up with the, with the full depth reclamation. But like I said, after they dug a little deeper with a core sample, they determined that that's unnecessary so we can achieve the same thing, making a lot less mess and spending less money.
Outstanding.
So where do you think the failure was then? If it wasn't, is it still in the aggregate failure? Was there, was a new determination of failure in that area for the repave?
There, there was. I just don't have it on me.
Okay. For the new core samples, it sounded like they're satisfied.
Yes, I guess the base is okay. It was my understanding that the base was bad or there was water, water table was too high or something was causing them.
Well, they're changing out the aggregate. They're just not going to put the concrete down there.
I see. So there's no need for the concrete.
No re, no need for the concrete. Right.
They mucked it out. That'd be part of the.
Man, I'm all for saving money. Just want to make sure it works.
Absolutely. A motion for alternative one?
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes unanimously. Item number eleven, consideration to approve Contract Twenty-three ITB dash oh forty with McWright LLC for the construction of the administrative building expansion renovation.
Yes, sir. So this ITB was sent to the five contractors that were approved through the request for qualification cycle that we did. And we did receive three bids, which are listed in your packet. All were reviewed by staff and Green Line, which is the architect for the building, and Albeck, who serves for program management. And staff recommends alternative one, which is awarded to McWright LLC.
Very good. Very expensive too, but.
Yes.
Look forward to seeing it get completed. Any questions or discussion? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes unanimously. Item number twelve, consideration to approve a proposal for Raftellis for a rate and financial planning study.
Oh, okay, I'll take it. Yeah, so one of the things we discussed last year was just to do a full rate analysis, particularly when it comes to our cost recovery fees related to water and sewer to make sure that we are adequately recouping our sunk costs into when we, when new development comes in. This will also take a look, look at our surrounding jurisdictions to make sure our prices are in line with where, where our neighbors are. And it'll dig even deeper into things like wholesale rates, volume rates, and items that we haven't looked at in, in quite a while. And give us a model that we can then work with. And then we can tweak from time to time. It'll essentially, we can either get the model online hosted, or we can actually get a, a spreadsheet of it so that we can use it as a planning document.
And this includes, I guess, some forecasts, sound like, projections? What this revenues would do for the county to recover costs and operations and so forth.
That's right. And so with the amount of construction that we have going on with regards to our water and sewer, capital projects related to water and sewer, we'll be able to plug all of those in there to determine that we are not just adequately recovering our sunk costs, but also making sure that on our rates, we're recovering our depreciation on it since eventually, you know, things have to be replaced. So it'll take all those factors into consideration.
Might help market a little bit with budgeting.
That's right.
Any questions, discussion, or a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes unanimously. Item number thirteen, consideration to approve Resolution Twenty-four dash oh thirteen to amend the fiscal year budget.
Good afternoon. Mark Barnes, Finance Director. This budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-four is pretty small. It just covers one item. And this is allocating a little bit of the opioid settlement funds that the county has received. They're highly restricted in what purposes we can use them for. And this allocates some of them to be used towards the naloxone, the Narcan, I think is the brand name of that. The opioid overdose medication for the sheriff's office to have on hand. Staff recommends alternative number one to approve the budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-four.
Very good. Yeah, a motion for alternative one?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, consideration to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the cities of Guyton, Rankin, Springfield regarding TSPLOS bond collection, distribution and management.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So when we passed the referendum, when the voters passed the referendum in November, also included in there was the capability to issue debt so that we can front load some of these projects. The referendum permitted sixty million dollars to be issued in debt. We then went out to our municipal partners and asked them if they wanted to participate. I'm happy to say that each have agreed to participate this time. And we've gotten IGA agreements from all three municipalities, and that is what we're approving now.
Very good. Hopefully this helps complete our projects even more timely.
I'll say one, one tiny thing on that. I was going to wait to my report. In this process, we did get rerated by Moody's. They reaffirmed our last upgrade, which was AA two, which is the second highest rating that you can get, two away from AAA. But I will say that their scorecard that they used had us pegged for an upgrade. But I have a feeling they, with the most recent upgrade, they wanted to kind of give it a little time before they upgraded again. So we were really scored to be an AA one and very close to a AAA.
Well, hopefully with some of this financial language processes we've implemented here recently, hopefully that'll help out in the next round as well.
Mm-hmm. And hopefully we won't be having to spend twenty million on a Parkway if the state helps us in the future. That, that hurt us using our fund balance with that.
That's right. Yeah, they saw a huge drawdown in the fund balance from two years ago.
Even though it's still strong.
Yeah, so.
Dimly. Very good. Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes unanimously. Item number fifteen, consideration to acknowledge a petition of annexation submitted by the city of Springfield for properties consisting of approximately sixty-five point seventy acres located at Webb and McCall Road. Map number three eighty-nine parcel number twenty-three, map number thirty-nine, three ninety. Excuse me, map number three ninety parcel number eighteen B and twenty. You presenting that, Ms. Stephanie? While you're looking at, this all is contiguous, correct?
Yes, sir. It will be once they combine that property to cross the road. Three eighty-nine dash twenty-three will make it contiguous. You see that there with the aerial? There are properties at McCall Road near Dashar Drive and Cook Street that is within the city. Parcel three eighty-nine dash twenty-three is being requested to be annexed, which will make it contiguous to the other parcels, three ninety twenty and three ninety eighteen B.
So they picked up a little lot there in the middle. And that's what makes it contiguous.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Wish we could be more moving because this is one of those cases that concerns me about, I'm in the city, I'm out of the city, I'm in the city, I'm out of the city.
Understood.
But it meets the law.
But it meets the law, yeah.
It's the definition of law.
I would just encourage the cities to try to, I'm fine with them getting the whole thing there if they could. I don't know how difficult that would be. So we don't have that in and out scenario. But anyway, any, any question, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer for alternative one. I got it backwards, didn't I? Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes unanimously. Item number sixteen, consideration to approve to identify a voting delegate, a voting delegate for consideration of the three remaining seats for statewide Georgia opioid settlement advisory committee, commission members of the Regional Advisory Council, RAC member.
Yes, sir. So we are one of the states that's participating in the settlement. They, under that settlement, they have established that committees need to be devised for, to determine the funding that's being allocated under this lawsuit. So each county is being asked to, within that region, is being asked to select a voting delegate that will be submitted and voted on to determine who will fill those three seats on those councils.
And those councils will distribute funds, right?
That's correct.
Or, I guess, in a grant form?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So staff has recommended. So staff is recommending to identify Chairman Corbett for our group.
So alternative one is to identify the chairman as the voting delegate. It's a motion for alternative one.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second. Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously. And then item number seventeen is our last new business consideration to approve resolution number twenty-four dash oh one four, adopting the fiscal year 2023 capital improvements annual update.
So about two meetings ago, we approved sending our annual update to DCA. DCA has approved it. Now, we've got to bring it back here, and you get a seat again with their approval on it, and so we just need you to approve it for our annual CIE update. So this also allows us to be eligible for the grants from DCA as well.
Just some of the information the rate study will use as well.
What's that?
Some of the information the rate study folks need as well.
Um, no, because it's, this is related to impact fees, and cost recovery fees are, are, are different, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but once, one of the things we will be talking about in the budget year is addressing some of our impact fees related to parks and, and public safety, so, but it doesn't affect our water and sewer rates, as those are effect, those are not part of the CIE as it's related to impact fees.
I got you. Any questions, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Burdette for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think because we're at the top of the hour, we'll take a five or ten minute break for restroom, and then we'll try to be back at the latest five or ten after for our public hearings. So if you're here tonight for public hearings, for those who are here for item number three and four of public hearings tonight, if you have your agenda, just let you know that's been removed from the agenda. So if you're here for those items, you wouldn't need to stay. We won't be hearing those tonight.
They were removed, not tabled.
Right, that's what I said.
Completely removed, yeah.
Yeah, they were removed, not tabled. Okay? They were removed. All right, we're gonna take a, a little recess before we get into the lengthy planning board session tonight.
Okay. We're gonna move into our planning board items. We'll come back to our reports and other items on the agenda. As we, if I have your attention, as we move into the planning board items, there'll be a couple items tonight that may take a little more conversation than some. We're gonna stick to our requirements of fifteen minutes on each side. And so when we do that, we need those who are speaking to be conscious. There may be others who want to speak. Because at the end of fifteen minutes, I will need to cut it off. So be sure that when you speak, be concise. If you have a document that you want to share, give that to the boards. We can be reviewing it while others are talking. But if you take time to read it, it takes ten minutes and somebody else may not get a chance to speak. We want to hear from many, many of the folks who want to speak for or against anything that's before the commission tonight. So help us with that if you will. So we'll go to item one on the planning board. The planning board recommends approving an application by Theodore Corellis as agent for Effingham County Industrial Development Authority to rezone 3.97 acres located on I-16 from AR-1 to I-1 to allow for the integration into an industrial park. This is map number 331 parcel number 5A, 4, 3, 13A, and 14A in the first district. We'll open our public hearing. We'll begin, Ms. Chelsea.
Yes, sir. So the applicant is proposing to rezone the parcels to industrial to integrate into that existing industrial park that currently borders it. Industrial zoning would be consistent with the future land use map for this area. As the parcels are projected to be industrial, planning board and staff are recommending alternative number one.
All right, we're in a public hearing. We'll hear from those who are speaking in favor of this rezoning request.
Ted Corellis, really just for questions, I can give you a brief intro. I mean, these are parcels that are part of the Savannah Portside Industrial Park, the Effingham IDA already has. And these are little parcels that border I-16 and the rest of their border is our industrial park. So it's consistent.
It's the location where, that's what it should be probably. Yep. Anyone tonight speaking in opposition to this rezoning request? Is that a hand raised back there? All right, seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion we approve with board, staff, and planning board recommendations.
Second, motion of Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. We'll have the second reading therefore. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Theodore Corellis as agent for Effingham County Industrial Development Authority to rezone 3.97 acres located on Interstate 16 from AR-1 to I-1 to allow for the integration into an industrial park. Map number 331 parcel number 5A, 4, 3, 13A, and 14A in the first district. Motion for second reading?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second, Mr. Kiefer to approve the second reading. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. Items three and four were removed from the agenda tonight. So if you're here for those items, they will not be heard and they will not be back on another agenda either. Item number five in the planning board, the planning board recommends approving an application by Rebecca Tucker as agent for Ferris Floyd to rezone two of seven acres located on Low Ground Road from AR-1 to AR-2 to allow for a new home site, map number 350 parcel number 3C in the first district. Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir. So the applicant is subdividing the two acres to create a new home site. Due to the two acres falling under that five acre threshold, for the AR-1 zoning, the new parcel must be rezoned to AR-2. Again, this rezoning is consistent with the future land use map, which has this parcel projected as agricultural residential. Staff and planning board recommend alternative number one.
To move this along, I'll see if there's anyone tonight speaking in opposition to this rezoning request? Anyone speaking in opposition that would like to speak in opposition to it? I don't see anyone, so those speaking for it don't need to unless you just want to.
No.
I'm gonna close the public hearing there. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve with planning board and staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Deloach. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously.
I want to say, I'm not kin to Ferris, even though I've heard of him all my life and never met him, but there's no kin. Yeah, oh yeah, same here.
If you go back forward enough, maybe to add them, you might add some genetics. Item number six is a second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Rebecca Tucker as agent for Ferris Floyd to rezone two of seven acres located on Low Ground Road from AR-1 to AR-2 to allow for a new home site, map number 350 parcel number 3C in the first district.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Kiefer. Is that what I heard? To approve the second reading?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. Item number seven, the planning board recommends approving an application by James Dasher as agent for Lane Nolan Earl Jr. to rezone 185 acres located at 311 Earl Lane Road from AR-1 to R-5 to allow for a residential development, map number 435 parcel number 19 in the second district. Open public hearing. We won't start the fifteen minutes until Ms. Chelsea gets through.
Yes, sir. So the applicant is proposing an approximate 260 single-family detached residential development that will be served by county water and sewer. This development, if approved, will be the first R-5 zoning approved for the county. Within your staff report, it does contain the R-5 ordinance. That's for your reference. The applicant is providing over thirty-five acres of open space. This exceeds the fifteen percent required net usable area as common outdoor open space that the R-5 ordinance does require. This rezoning is consistent with the future land use map. As this parcel is projected as agricultural residential, as you can see on that map there, staff and planning board recommend alternative number one.
All right, we're in a public hearing and we're gonna hear from those who are speaking in favor of this zoning request tonight first.
Good evening, everyone. I'm James Dasher and I represent the Earl Lane family. This is a project that we had been working on for quite some time. We were hoping it to be phase two of the Windwood development that you guys approved last year. And we had agreed not to bring it before you guys until we had some type of traffic relief. We were fortunate enough to acquire the traffic light at the end of Hodgeville and Highway 30. So we felt like it was a good time to bring this before you tonight. But as Ms. Chelsea stated, we're looking at roughly 260 homes. A good portion of it is perimeter is a wetland, so it gives natural buffer to the majority of the community. And here to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, I'm confused on this. So what is it that we've already approved on Earl Lane? So is this a new parcel?
It is. It is. Mr. Deloach, the original Windwood development is 172 lots and it fronts Hodgeville Road and it also calms down Earl Lane and both accesses from either side of Earl Lane.
Okay, so this means the entire, here?
Correct. And then there's some personal private property that doesn't belong to us. That's between us and this track.
I got a question.
That's the fastest fifteen minutes I've ever had.
How are we handling the road on this? I mean, who's doing what? This may be a dual question for staff and you, Mr. Dasher. Who's gonna, what's the share? What was the county expected to do in the top portion? You know, can we narrow that down to exactly what you're willing to do on the road portion? And then what is expected the county to do on that?
Can't say this, or timeline.
Yeah, timelines and...
We're working on the portions that we own, that we will own, and we will improve that to county standards. And we are working with Mr. Steve, Ms. Chelsea, and the staff to try to understand what we can do on properties that we do not own.
So, and I can add some to that. So we, through the deed research on this, while the, while the county maintains it, it is at the end there prescriptive as it connects to Collichamley. So what we are going to, what we're gonna do is get the necessary right of way to bring it to the eighty feet required and then be responsible for the section outside of their property control.
Basically where the smaller lots lead in Collichamley, that's what the county will provide.
Yes, sir.
And to clarify, I think from Mr. Deloach, what they approved only, I think, was a PD? And I don't think we had R-5 at that time.
That's correct. It'll look very similar because what, they knew what we were working on when we were designing the R-5. It was not approved by the board at the time, so they went with PD. But the design standards are very similar to R-5.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what we were trying to push people toward, R-5.
Correct, if I'm wrong, but at one time, and it might have been part of this family, and maybe these purchases take care of this, but at one time, the family wouldn't let you cross all the way through. So it really wasn't a through road, but now...
You can travel it now.
After all this, that'll be able to happen.
You're correct.
Okay. I thought there was some issue in the past.
You basically drive through their yard the way it, the way it stands today. They, they do allow, they don't allow access, but they also don't stop access. But folks, there's a little bit of traffic that comes through there. But when we develop the property, there'll be a county road that comes all the way through, which we really feel will be a huge benefit to the Hodgeville, Southern Hills communities getting to and fro school. Thank you for your help with that, Mr. Dasher.
Yeah, there is a need for housing for the growth that's coming. And we, if you remind, the constituents of our board, we did the R-5 that has the more required architecture and landscaping and green space. It was things that we didn't have on the books in our zoning. So they went to a PD to meet those things that we wanted to have a higher quality standard of product in protecting those around. And so that's why they're going for the R-5 now, because it's in our text for R-5.
And it's extensive.
Oh, yeah. That's gonna be some of our better, better zonings. All right, did you have anything else that you want to speak to this?
Any more questions?
I did have one more question. Could we go back to the plat? And we discussed this, Mr. Dasher, would you be willing to do a fence to protect some of these people? And this is really an ideal one to do because it's a very, very small amount in relation to the size and scope of the project. And I'd like to see projects like this, but I think it gives us also an opportunity to protect some of the people along the way that...
We absolutely will. Yeah, we've had that conver, our team's had that conversation. We're very happy to do that.
Could I stipulate that? And I'm only asking for like that bottom half, only where it meets lots?
Yeah.
And that top area to protect those people along Collichamley? Everything else that I see, there's so much space involved, there's no need for it. But just those small areas, that, that, I think that'd be a win for the people along there.
Sure, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
You're talking about, yes, here?
Yes, sir.
Along those dozen lots or so?
You know, people have three to five acre lots. Looking at their backyard and they've got four to five lots they're looking into. A fence would give them a little bit of protection in those areas and on the bottom ones there. And everything else, there's, there's no impact.
Well, there's a lot of...
Yeah, there's plenty of land there.
Plenty of buffer, trees there, yeah.
We're open to a vegetation buffer or either a privacy fence, whichever, whichever is preferred.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
One of the benefits of, personally, I like the vegetation buffer. But the concern is if you don't water them, you know, who's gonna maintain them after, after you go? You know, so the privacy fence is an option.
Will an HOA take over this if it's approved eventually and take care of the grounds and everything, I assume?
Yeah.
Could they be required to maintain the fence or how would that work?
That'll be on someone's yard, so it...
Oh, I see. It'd be like the homeowner.
Yeah, be up to the homeowner.
So these are for sale, not for rent?
I'm sorry?
These are for sale, not for rent.
That is correct, yeah. But we're, we're open to vegetation buffer or the privacy fence?
I appreciate that. I love to try to find somewhere in the middle where we can protect people, develop, and do things that make sense at the same time.
Yeah, we agree.
And from my perspective, by the time a CO is issued on these, we'll have the Parkway, we'll have a roundabouts in, we'll have, and then Earl Lane to open up for school traffic. I think it would really enhance the ability to get kids to school and the ability to travel and having a...
Yeah, realistically, we're a couple of years out from seeing homes.
Well, hopefully, we're well into that and we're covered infrastructure-wise. Because we do need those improvements before we see those rooftops.
Yeah, we agree.
All right, do you have anything else you want to add?
Here to answer your questions.
I have a question for staff, but I can wait a minute.
Okay, all right, we'll close this part of the public hearing out and ask for those who are speaking in opposition. If you'd like to speak, and we'll have the same fifteen minutes put on the clock for that. Anyone tonight that'd like to speak in opposition to this rezoning request, you can come to the mic. Anyone speaking in opposition?
Somebody's got to do it.
I got a question. I got a few questions, actually. We talk about R-5, what's the density we're talking? We're talking 250 houses?
You might be mentioning your name, sorry.
I'm sorry, my name is Herb Powell. I live over in Effingham Forest, which is adjacent to the property.
Let staff answer that for us. Mrs. Kelsey, he's got a question about the density of the houses per acre. Is that what you're asking?
Houses per acre, yeah, because we're talking going from agricultural to R-5.
Well, I mean, what's the density, four point?
Yes.
Four point what?
It is, and I'm just looking real quick, I'm sorry.
The reason I ask is because there, you know, rumors always start, get started about when developments start going on. And I had heard condos. Are condos something that can happen?
Not, not in R-5. And so it has to be a single-family in R-5. It can't even be townhomes. And so under the, under the current, under the R-5 zoning, it's single-family homes.
Okay.
And while we can say, and I just don't remember the percentage point, we could say something like, let's say, 4.5 homes per acre.
Right.
They, what's that? Five, five homes per acre? It, it's very difficult to reach anywhere near that density because of the, because of the lot width requirements and the open space requirements.
Right.
So I think, and I just don't have those calculations. The developer may have them.
Mr. Dasher, can you tell us how many homes per acre for the whole property is?
We have roughly 180 acres and 260 homes, but I have, we have had zero conversation about condos. That's the first I've heard.
Okay.
Well, you can't, you can't do it in the zoning we're doing tonight. You couldn't do it in the zoning he's requesting.
How many houses per acre?
Well, you take 260 divided by 180. I don't have a calculator.
I'm gonna do it.
Well, 180 is not real 180 because a lot of that is swamp land.
I'm gonna get me engineer to step up there.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, for the 260 acres, there'll be 1.4, about one and a half residents per acre for that whole lot. That's the total of the density. Do you want to add to that?
Sure, Mike Hughes with Thomas and Nutt, and I'm the engineer of record. It is 1.44 units per tire acreage, and then it's about 2.33 units per upland acre.
Upland acre, okay, thank you.
Upland acre meaning buildable.
Yeah, no wetlands. Once you exclude the wetlands from the total site acreage, you're about 2.33 units.
Thank you, sir. I don't want to take away from...
Roughly a third of an acre per residence. Is that what you're saying?
In the totality, but they won't be on one-third acres by any...
Because of the open space.
If we do the roads, the stormer ponds, the open space, all that ends up being...
The lots will be less than a third of an acre.
What kind of houses are we talking here? I mean, single family residential.
Here's another question, what kind of houses?
Yeah, I mean, is there...
They're, they're single-family residential homes.
What's about the size of them? That's what she's probably asking.
The home sizes, we haven't determined the home sizes. That'll be just based on the purchaser and what, what home they'd be looking to decide.
Because I think a lot of the concern, and I certainly share it, is when you start getting into densities like this, you start turning into rental income. And I don't see how this benefits me as a homeowner.
But we need to go in separate to the mic if you're gonna, if you need to speak.
So I don't see how this benefits me as a homeowner to be able to have this kind of development. We had, I was here once before and that was for the original development out off of Hodgeville Road there at Earl Lane Road for 125 houses. Now, we've got an additional 250 going in there? What's the total number of houses that are you gonna put in there that are gonna dump onto Hodgeville Road with our new, thank you very much for the, the traffic light that's helped immensely? But it's not gonna do a thing for this amount of traffic? You're gonna dump it all on Hodgeville Road?
Well, to answer that question, if I could, we're gonna, we will have a roundabout at Hodgeville and 30. So that, that light is just temporary to get our traffic flowing now, today. Down the road, we'll have, we'll actually have a roundabout there to really get some flow going through there.
I just hope you have a feel for how much traffic we're really talking here.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it, it's...
I understand. I met with the HOA, the Secretary of the HOA, and it brought a lot of concerns to me. And the main things were infrastructure, traffic, and the protection of the homes, which is one of the things I wanted.
I'm just trying to figure out what this does for me. I mean, this does something for them. I got nothing against the landlord or doing what they want to do with their property and selling it and putting houses on it. But as long as it doesn't affect my, one of my largest investments, which is my house, and it is for most people.
Yes, sir.
So when it starts undermining my property values, which I think is what that's gonna end up doing, as I understand it, unless somebody can convince me otherwise, I just don't see any good reason to approve this.
Tell me how it's going to undermine your value.
If these values sell for a lot less than what my house does?
Well, if you're on two, they're not gonna be appraised the same if you're on acreage. They'll be, they'll be looked at, looked at in a different way by the...
I'm not talking about appraisal, I'm talking about actual selling price.
Yes. If you've got a 2,500 square foot house and this is 17...
Right.
Yours is gonna sell for more.
I haven't seen anything...
Not if, not if the area gets...
I haven't seen anything go backwards in Effingham in many, many years.
Sir, let me give you a...
We can agree to disagree, but I mean, like I say...
Let me give you an example of why we went to the R-5 to encourage developers to move to that area versus multifamily and didn't have the texture, didn't have the setbacks, didn't have the green spaces and the HOAs. We're trying to get a better quality if we're gonna have density because even our Corps of Education tells us we need affordable housing. Not for rent, but people can actually buy a house. My daughter lives in a area like this in South Carolina...
Right.
Where they have, they can shake hands with their neighbors. Her, my daughter's husband's a doctor. They love their neighborhood. It's, it's a beautiful neighborhood. HOA takes care of everything. Right next to them are million and a half dollar houses on half acre and acre lots, and they're not damaged because of the quality of that type of zoning. That's what we're shooting for when we opened the R-5 zoning. I can't promise you that's how the developer would do it, but I know that's what we designed. We put into these more requirements than the other zoning that was previously on the books that would allow for something that could hurt your property. I think this R-5 is, is a good zoning that protects your property from being damaged.
Okay, well, I feel a little bit better knowing that some of the other things are off the table. I don't want to take up a lot of time because I know there are other people. My other question is, what is a vegetation buffer?
Exactly what it is.
Is that a lawn? Is that bushes? Is that trees?
It can be prescriptive.
You want me to answer it? So, yeah, so, no, it's, it's bushes and, it's bushes and trees, and we actually have specific... First of all, if there's existing bushes and trees there, it can't be disturbed, right? But if they, if there's nothing there and they have to essentially vegetate it themselves, there's an approved list of vegetation that we provide that will actually provide screening that we're trying to accomplish.
Are we creating additional wetlands here, like trading some land for other land? We're not doing that? Okay. Because right now, that's all a swampy area behind the houses.
Yeah, most of it's gonna be buffered by the, by the wetlands. There's that one row of houses that the commissioner was concerned about that he might ask us a condition to put a privacy fence versus just a vegetated buffer.
It's so cost prohibitive to get mitigation credits right now, nobody in their right mind would even attempt to do that for a residential area.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
All right, we have, we have another eight minutes. Anybody else want to speak in opposition to this tonight? Or raise concerns that we need to be aware of? If you can come to the microphone. State your name, please, and share any concerns you have.
My name is Carol Elliott. I live in the same subdivision as we just discussed, Effingham Forest. I live lot, my house is lot 23, which is, right now, I have wetlands between my property and wherever the next property is supposed to start. I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
I'd like some clarification as to how this is gonna affect me.
With wetlands will not be affected. So if the wetlands are between you now, and if the applicant wants to...
Because you get different, you know, depends on how deep the pockets are and whatnot. So I just want some clarification.
Can you help her with that?
Absolutely. So I don't know if you want to look at the map, but we do show the wetlands in these have been field delineated. We have not gone over the Corps of Engineers yet. We're only looking at road crossings interior to the site to get access to the larger pockets. But otherwise, what you see in that hatch pattern is the wetlands that will be in place and remaining. So only crossing locations are there, there, and then there may be some with the road improvements. But otherwise, all these wetlands will remain undisturbed.
There'll be nothing in those wetlands, no development, no prevails, no shelters, no nothing. no nothing, they'll stay as they are.
Okay, and when is construction supposed to start?
Do you have an estimate on that?
I mean, we would be looking at about eighteen months, plus or minus, it'd be nice if we get it in a year, but it's just permitting.
And the first thing you have to do at eighteen months is build the roads and infrastructure like water and sewer and so forth, so it'd probably be a little further, maybe two years before a house is even built, and that's when we, we've got things in place, we believe transportation will be addressed at that time. Be, be, the parkway will be done, um, Hodgsville's being improved with turn lanes, uh, roundabouts, um, we've got some other roads we're, we're planning on building, so we, we think we're gonna have the, the transportation resolve issues.
And the fencing that you were discussing earlier, what kind of fencing to separate the, the properties?
Typically, we do privacy fencing, but it wouldn't be on that neighborhood, you'd be so far away, it wouldn't, there would be no need to...
Effingham Forest is not gonna be affected, basically, as far as...
If you, just looking at your map...
Being able to see my neighbors or anything like that, or my neigh, or people behind me, because I'm right there.
The only ones that should, if you step back and look at that map, the only ones that should be affected are those four lots at the top, and that's where Commissioner, um, Burdette's suggesting a privacy fence.
So you guys are right here, that's it.
Okay, this, this is mine.
That's right, that's right, that's you guys right there, so see the wetlands right here?
Uh-huh.
So that's gonna remain that way, these people will be affected by this group of housing, and those four lots will be affected by that group of housing, you don't have any against the property.
So, do you know, um, how many acres or yards?
How many feet?
Feet, whatever.
Can I let y'all discuss that in the sidebar?
It's about two-hundred feet, it looks like.
I'm gonna see if there's anybody else.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I, I do want you to have that answered, though, ma'am, so if you want to get a sidebar discussion, anyone else tonight that would like to speak to this, uh, rezoning request?
Yes, sir, my name is Sandy Edwards, and I also live in the same neighborhood, and as this council sits here and prays at the table that Jesus flipped over, I'd like to know, are they gonna pave Earl Lane all the way through?
I think that's the intention, is if we're to be paved all the way through, yep.
That was what I was clarifying earlier.
It's gonna be even actually widened and paved, and it's gonna be...
And as we sit here in our delusional world, that a traffic circle is going to magically correct things, and just move the line of traffic from one side to another, and we bring West Savannah here to Effingham, what else are we gonna do?
Besides the traffic circle?
Yeah.
We've got the parkway being improved, we've got Goshen being improved?
And we already have trucking routes that go through here that, once they get, they'll be done long before the parkway ever gets completed, and we know all that, but, uh, Earl Lane will be paved all the way through.
Yes, sir.
Okay, why were, uh, I have friends that live on Earl Lane, why were none of their properties, they've asked if they could sell out to this group, why were they not made an offer?
I can't answer that, we're not here to answer that for you.
Yeah, I know you couldn't, but I wanted to get it out there to make sure the slumlords over here knew it, so, thank you.
I appreciate your comments, anybody else tonight have anything?
One other ques, I have one other question that regards, uh, to the EPA, EPA still has to do an assessment on this property, is that correct?
Every, every property...
An impact statement.
EPD, 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 so, yeah, they're, they're disturbing enough land so that they will need, um, uh, necessary land disturbance activity permits.
Okay.
Um, and, um, they are, um, uh, crossing wetlands, um, so they would need, uh, they would need the necessary permits for that process as well.
Okay, because my other concern is the young lady who spoke a few minutes ago, whose yard backs up to this development, uh, has water issues now, and when you put that many houses in there, I understand they're gonna have lawns, but the footprint of the houses are gonna affect the drainage, now, they're gonna, I'm know, they're gonna dig ponds and do all that other stuff, but what's gonna keep us from pushing that water over in our neighborhood?
Well, they have to present a plan that's approved by EPD, Georgia Soil and Water, that the water's not gonna leave the property any faster than before, that's what determines the retention, so they have to go through a whole above-my-pay grade on understanding.
Right, understanding.
We have to, we have to get that certification that that's not gonna affect the other properties that they've resolved the drainage, because you're right, anytime you have impermeable services, that water's gotta go somewhere.
Exactly.
So they gotta direct that to the right channels, to the right detention, retention, and so forth.
Okay.
If they can't prove that, they won't, they have to change their, uh, sketch plan.
Okay, thank you.
We got a few more minutes, any, anyone else would like to speak in opposition to this rezoning request? Seeing no one coming, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and see if there's any discussion, questions among the board.
I wanted to clarify, um, this is something I like to watch, is, um, I see, you know, the lots that are, that are adjacent to what will be the improved Earl Lane, will they have the proper buffer, you know, the, the berms, um, how is that, I, I was...
I, I believe the way that they're, they're gonna, and forgive me if I'm wrong here, um, similarly on the first phase, um, what they did was they have them, um, uh, front with an alleyway access, is that correct? Um, can you just confirm it, if you could?
Sure, so the intention is any home site that fronts Earl Lane, we don't want driveways on Earl Lane, we want to go into the neighborhood so that we're not having a bunch of driveway cuts that would affect traffic, um, so, are you referring to other properties that are along Earl Lane?
No, uh, I guess the homes will back up to Earl Lane?
No, they're gonna face, the front, the front doors.
They will face, okay, that, okay.
Yeah, so we specifically made the product so that you're not looking at the back of the homes.
I just didn't see that, that...
Yep, sorry.
That lane.
Yeah, because the, the R five zoning requires if it backs up, you gotta have a, a vegetated berm, I believe.
That's right, yeah.
To, to protect the corridor and the eyesight of that area, so it looks, looks good, but what you're gonna do is you're gonna have the house face it, and a lane behind it, so they pull into the garage behind the house.
That's correct, our, our concern is we're...
That's where my daughter's R five is, up in Jackalina.
It's as much about safety as it is honestly, the, the aesthetics, it'll look a lot better looking at the front of the homes, but also there's driveway cuts and people backing out of the driveway into that roadway, we'd prefer to have them route through the neighborhood and then access that way.
Very good.
So the only time we used to berm is at, is the back of the house?
Yeah, the back of the house is going toward that road, we wanna improve that corridor, so we gotta, uh, zoning requires a vegetated berm.
I'm not sure if...
That makes it, like what's on Blue Jay there, wouldn't happen in the future.
Okay, I thought we were doing the berm, no matter what.
I'm sorry, that berm ordinance is so new, I don't have a...
Yeah, so Mr. Ch, Chelsea's gonna look it up, there is a reference in there to residential development, and that smallish six-foot berm that we talked about before, so she's gonna look that up and, and see what it says.
Because, you know...
But they did front-load those lots intentionally so there would not be, like we've experienced in the past.
Yeah, I don't think a berm would be attractive if you're looking at the front of the house, I think because of the architecture that we're requiring, the offsets, everything...
Right.
We'd rather see the front of the house...
That might be...
You know, than, but if you're looking at the back of the house, that was the question we had.
Makes sense.
But you're looking at it to see if it is, if a berm's required.
Yes, sir, I'm looking right now.
And I'm, I'm, don't think we even contemplated that when we considered ordinance, did we?
There was something in there about residential, but I can't remember exactly what it is that caused the berm.
Yeah, I just don't remember, it's a sting machine.
I remember discussing the height of the berm being the relative...
Mean, or, mean or collective.
Being the surface of the drive.
I, I, this, this, this would not be a, I, I don't, this would not be a collector road, um, which is a requirement on it, um, so, um, we did the berm requirement so that if you're on a kind of main artery road, uh, you wouldn't have to look at it, but if you're on kind of an interior neighborhood-type road, uh, we didn't include the requirement on it, um, so it wouldn't apply here, um, even if they were to back up, um, but they're fronting anyway, so, um, so it looks better, so that's probably where...
But we just have to consider, what does Earl Lane become? Does it, you know what I, I mean, it...
That, that, that's correct, but it's not, I, I think we have to, probably have to do it as what it's approved.
I'm just concerned, I just want to make sure we're, we're considering the aesthetics of...
Yeah, I'd like us to go back and look at that and tweak that, because I would be of the opinion that if you're fronting it with an R five that has the architectural appeal that other zonings don't have...
I got you.
I'd rather look at the house than a berm.
That might be the case, yeah.
And we might want to go back and tweak that to say that, and to cover county local roads as well as arterial and collector roads.
Gotcha.
You know, and, and close that possible loophole for, um, even collector roads. I think for a collector road to have a house that's beautiful facing it, but we gotta put a berm down to hide it, I wouldn't do that either, okay? All right, we're gonna clo, we've closed the public hearing, any other questions or discussions? Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would say, um, I would suggest that if Commissioner Burdette is going to make a motion and include that fence language, um, just to be specific, um, in the height of the fence and the length of the fence as well.
And height.
All right, I'm gonna ask you to make a motion and do that, then we'll see, because I think the developer has to accept that, um, freely, if you, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna get a chance to vote on it, okay?
Typically, what I've asked for in the past, get it or not get it, seven-foot wooden privacy fence.
Yeah, we, we will agree to a six-foot wood privacy fence with the lots that back up to the homes that are identified on this plan, if that's accepted.
Okay, I would do that, that would be fine, uh, do it identified, and, you know, for the, the builder in the future, uh, there's really one, really only a couple of places. It's at the very top and the very bottom, as you can see on those lots, everything else is, I don't know how you would identify that formally for the, the motion, but, um...
I can point it out to you, send it to my microphone. We, we, we will agree to that.
Yes, sir.
So he knows what you agree to.
So we're talking here to here, those three, and then those around, right? Absolutely.
There's like three and then the ten up at the top, right?
So we talked about, like, from here over?
Right.
And those up there, right?
Correct.
Six-foot wood privacy fence.
That would be sufficient.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you protecting those people there.
So, would you like to make a motion, Mr. Burdette?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the staff and planning board recommendations and stipulations, and the added stipulation of the fencing as noted.
Yes, fencing as...
As noted.
As noted.
Yep, and they just described that staff's got that record, so they can help clarify that.
Are you comfortable with the language on the improvement of the, of Earl Lane?
Yeah, it's, it sounds like planning board, I mean, not planning board, our staff has got a good handle on that.
Just making sure.
As long as our attorney's happy with that part of it, and everything's legal, and we're good, and...
Okay.
All right, I got a motion, Mr. Burdette, you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Floyd, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, no, hearing no, no, it passes, we cannot do the second reading because we have a condition, we'll have to do that in a couple of weeks, the second reading, okay? All right, item number nine in the public hearings, the planning board recommends approving the application by Kevin Forbes as agent for TNT Axley Properties, uh, Thomas and Hutton Engineering Company to rezon, uh, thousand fifty-one acres located on Highway seventy-one from PD to PD to allow for the amendment of a planned development, map number four-four-six D parcel number six-nine and eleven in the second district. All right, so we're gonna open a public hearing, we'll start, Ms. Chelsea on this, and then, uh, we're gonna set the clock after that, we have fifteen minutes.
Yes, sir, so, the applicant proposes to amend the PD document to remove the multifamily residential and replace it, uh, with industrial, um, a similar application was withdrawn in September of two thousand twenty-three, uh, from the Board of Commissioners, um, the applicant is proposing the maximum of six-hundred-and-thirty thousand square feet of highway commercial and nine million five-hundred thousand square feet of industrial. At the February thirteenth, uh, planning board meeting, uh, Mr. Zipper did make a motion for approval, um, he did add, uh, some conditions, uh, those conditions are that a temporary ready-mix concrete plant be constructed during the duration of the project, um, a berm be simon, simultaneously constructed with the warehouse as soon as the warehouse begins, and when clearing begins within the hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer area, the berm construction must begin, um, the PD text that you have been provided, um, has these recommended changes included? Uh, planning board and staff are recommending alternative number one.
All right, we'll open a public hearing, I think I'm gonna have some questions as I look at this, but we'll hear from anyone speaking in favor, and we'll start our clock.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Murray Marshall, I represent, my son Joe and I, and Mr. Ford represent the Axley family on this property, uh, to begin, our attorney has asked that I read into the record, uh, a notice to preserve our objections under US and Georgia constitutions. As many of you are already aware, the owner has endeavored diligently and in good faith to screen adjacent and contiguous properties from the proposed development and prevent noise pollution by buffer and berm, and we have engineered the development to the fullest extent practical in order to address these issues without making the project economically impractical. Having done that, and in an abundance of caution, our attorneys have requested that we read the following statement in order to preserve the owner's objection and appeal rights in the event that further amendments to the rezoning petition inadvertently cancel owner's existing residential zoning, while at the same time making industrial development on the property impractical, and the statement reads, "To the extent that Effingham County Council approves petitioner's proposed rezoning, but with amendments that cancel the existing residential zoning, while at the same time diminishing the scope of the project or otherwise making industrial development on the property impractical, then petitioner objects that such action would violate petitioner's due process and equal protection rights under the Georgia and United States constitutions, and comprise an inverse condemnation or other unlawful taking of petitioner's property without just compensation." A copy of this statement, I actually, I forwarded, I didn't bring a copy of it, a paper copy, and I forwarded it to staff a few minutes ago.
Yes, we received it.
So, so thank you very much for allowing me to do that.
So Lee, what in the world did he just say? Nobody else does that.
He said if we changed what he...
I mean, I get it, I mean, I'm feeling that it's more like a threat, that we've gotta approve that up there, or...
No, they're constitutional, excuse me, Mr. Lofsky, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I apologize.
Well, I'm done now.
It was not meant as, as a threat, it's a constitutional requirement that if I read that into the record, and through the course of our discussion, a motion is made and passed that diminishes the value of our holding, then we have a right to challenge, and my understanding, I'm not the lawyer, is that failure to read that into the record means that we have, we don't have that right, or we don't have it as strongly as we otherwise would, I don't think we have an issue like that, okay?
All right, hey, say, Lee, do you want to add anything to that?
I don't think I really need to add anything to that, I could, I think it could probably just be attached and incorporated into the minutes, I don't necessarily agree that it has to be read verbatim before every hearing that we have, um, so maybe in the future, we'll, I'll discuss that with Mr. Glass and maybe avoid that part of it, because just, yeah, I guess on the record too, we're not consenting to anything you just said, just, just to be fair.
I understand that.
Correct, because in my, my estimation, if we were to make a motion and change something, they'd have, we always ask, do you accept these changes, they'd have an opportunity tonight or next meeting to accept it or deny, and, and that would probably put an end to some of their rights he just read, uh, so unless we made a motion and take action without your approval acceptance, uh, I don't see how, what you just read's gonna help you, but anyway, it's in the record, so we'll move on.
Yes, and I apologize if I came across in an overhanded way, y'all, I didn't mean that to be that way.
You gotta follow your attorney, we gotta follow our attorney too. All right, continue, we got a few more minutes.
Um, we presented this project, y'all, I think it was over a year ago initially, and then we, we were moving through the process, and there were some changes that, one of them was requested, a question was raised by commission about changes that might come about after, assuming we got an industrial zone, to the total density of industrial use. And yes, the drawing that was on the table last summer did have less on it than the drawing that's in front of you today. The drawing that's in front of you today is taking the county's ordinance and maximizing how many square feet of warehouse space we can put on there, and allowing for open space and stormwater detention on there. So do we think we can get this much? Well, we hope so, is it, and I don't know whether we ever will or not get to that level, but that was what we perceived to be a question that came up last summer. Another reason that we withdrew it in September was there was a ruling by the Supreme Court affecting wetlands, that our engineers, wetlands engineers and civil engineers told us, or we all talked about it and decided that there was a possibility that we could have some significant relief on this property based on that. Well, that, that didn't come to pass, at least it hadn't yet, the, for various and sundry reasons. The market has softened some on industrial, but we still are getting a good enough amount of demand for it, especially on the south end of FNM County. We're working on some other properties that are further into the county, not getting the kind of demand. So we're back before you to move forward with basically the same thing that we presented before, except it has more density on it, and we're asking for approval. There are particularly a couple of paragraphs that I wanna read, because I think it explains some concessions that we have made since we were before, you before. On page two, paragraph seven E, we're adding a sentence that says, excuse me, "Under no circumstances may clearing be performed closer than 150 feet of the Exley North Northern property line without the simultaneous construction of the applicable berms outlined herein, which are outlined on the exhibits." And then on, excuse me, on page five, paragraph 16, "Ready-mix concrete facilities shall not be allowed in Exley Track North except for a temporary facility that is used during development and construction in the Exley Track North and South PDMU that is north of the Exley property line, that is north of the Exley property line only, and is producing concrete solely for construction and development north of the Exley property line. No concrete may be produced by this temporary facility and used for development and construction except for tract, except for Exley Track North and South development and construction. Said temporary facility shall not be located closer than 300 feet to the nearest residential And then on page eight, paragraph five, add a sentence, "Under no circumstances may clearing be performed closer than 150 feet of the Exley North Northern property line without the simultaneous, simultaneous construction of the applicable berms outlined herein," and add a paragraph six, "When any clearing commences that requires the construction of a berm, the applicable berm shall be completed within 12 months of commencement of said clearing." And then on page 10, paragraph J, add a, at the end of the sentence, let me read the sentence, "There shall be a conditional buffer of 450 feet as shown on exhibit E and as described above in paragraph seven E, which is paragraph 7E, page two, which is not, the page two is not written, I don't think, on what you're looking at."
What's the 450-foot buffer for?
If we put a building that is more than 450 feet away from the northern property, the residential property line, we don't have to build a buffer at that point in time.
Berm.
We, but, excuse me, the berm at that point in time, the 150-foot buffer cannot be touched for any reason, and if we do, then it has to have the berm built at that point in time, if we start any clearing within that 150 feet.
So you're saying, so even though you're showing a berm across the whole property, you're saying if one of those warehouses is not located there, it's 450 foot from that property line to the first industrial structure, there'd be no berm there?
There's just one at the very rear.
Yeah. Way back in the back, right on railroad track, there's only one building that qualifies for it.
Okay, so all the berm I'm looking at across between the residential?
Those are, if we build any one of those, they're within this, they're closer than 450 feet, and the applicable berm, A, B, C, D, and E would have to be built.
Back up to anything, it's a railroad track, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's about 400 and something feet away.
I follow you.
That's the one on the right?
Yeah, I said left.
It's, it's on the, it's right, well, all the way at the back.
The left?
Yeah.
And there's no residential behind that?
Didn't appear to be. And it's just, and that warehouse is 450 feet off of?
Don't mind this one.
This one, this one's gotta have the berm. So that back left, and it's 400 feet now from the railroad track.
It's building number one, 400, 400,000 square feet, that parallels the railroad track.
It'll be 400 feet from the railroad track.
It's over 450 feet away from the residential.
I got you.
If you were building that, you wouldn't have to build a berm.
We would not, we could build that one building and not have to build a berm. Anything else that we touch?
I'm with you.
If it's the building number two, we've gotta build all of berm A. If it's building number two, we've gotta build all of berm A. If it's building number, excuse me, two is all of berm A, three is all of berm?
We got it, you might want to save it.
You got it, okay.
Save your time, because you've got about three more minutes.
Okay. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, is there any?
Building these, okay, go ahead.
I was gonna see if there's anybody else speaking for at the top. All right, we might go and ask a few questions before we get the opposing side.
I was gonna say, the builders don't have numbers, is that the sequence you plan on building these?
Uh, we have no idea what the sequence will be.
It'll be a different builder.
It could be, if you built this one building, then only that light blue colored berm would be built prior to that construction.
Berm four, yes.
Okay.
Where's the concrete plant supposed to be?
We don't, we, outside of 300 feet, your current ordinance, if it's just a heavy industrial, would allow a permanent facility within 300, on the 300-foot line.
It'll depend on where they, where the warehouse is.
I guess one question I have, I've got a few more minutes.
The more likely place for it to be is on building, where building number five is.
Well, my question would be this, that's gonna be a lot of noise from that. When you break ground for that, since a warehouse would be there, would the berm be built at the time that concrete plant's gonna go in?
Well, the reason we're thinking it'll be there is proximity to the front and the back of the property, that building would not be able to be built until that concrete facility, we'd be building the building, it's the last building, if we put the concrete facility there, it would be there to pour for the other buildings.
I'm just a little concerned about?
What's the berm, though? Would the berm be in place before that concrete facility starts operation?
No, no, but the ordinance, as I understand it right now, if we had a 300, we came in here and said we wanna be rezoned, and we are 300 feet away, then there's no berm at all anyway.
But we're, we're writing a, rewriting the text of a PD.
I understand.
I know, and, and so part of the issue we have, I have anyway, I can't see if it's the board, is when you are moving, at some point residential and industrial come together, and at that point, you have to look at some transitional, and that's why I think if you're gonna have a concrete plant there, we know it's gonna be noisy, I would not wanna burden those folks for five, six, seven, eight years, if it took that long to get a, a warehouse there, and that concrete plant is pumping out noise, we've got complaints, we know they're noisy and what they create.
But it can't be, it's only for this site, it can't pump concrete to go across the street, it can't go?
But I'm talking about the actual work of the concrete facility.
It is limited under our request to developing concrete only on this site.
I understand, but it's noisy on that concrete development on that site.
The process.
The process is noisy.
I'm not arguing that at all, no, we're over 300 feet away, which is what your ordinance, and heavy industrial, isn't heavy industrial a 300-foot buffer, no berm is required? Is that not?
We've already, we've already turned down a concrete plant that wanted to be an industrial site that had residents near it on Highway 8.
That was over 300 feet away?
I bet the buffer was 300 feet.
Really? Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I thought the ordinance?
I had approval just 'cause you meet A and B and C.
But in fairness, that was a full-blown concrete operation.
We're not.
Correct, it was a full-blown, so my concern though, is that we're approaching a industrial site, I mean, we're approaching a residential site, and that's where there needs to be some transitional consideration. I think I would like to see if you're gonna, because originally you came before us, it was gonna be on the south end, that concrete plant.
There was one there.
What can it go there now?
Because we don't own it, that's in, that's in the property, it's already developed, every building in there is, I think, is now occupied.
Okay, I, I think there needs to be something looked at, we can talk that in a minute among the board and see if you're willing to do something if we wanna move forward, to protect there being seven or eight or 10 years of a concrete plant, even though it's for the on-site construction, and those folks that are right across there thinking, man, we need a berm, that's awful noisy, here we going all day, and we can't enjoy our yard, so that's, that's my concern.
I know the time's running, may I make one comment?
One comment.
Suggestion, if we put the concrete plant on building number five, the pad that's building number five, and build the berm that is in orange, is that satisfy what you're talking about?
Is the berm, is that number five's berm?
Yes.
Yes, that would satisfy.
Okay.
Yeah, we can come back and see if you can, because that would, that would drown the noise out that we talked about at the first time you made a presentation about, you know, building the warehouses, okay?
Any other?
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Murray.
Any other?
Now, we may have some more when we get to our discussion, we're gonna continue our public hearing now.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're gonna go to the other side, we got 15 minutes, and we'll see if anybody tonight likes to speak in opposition to this request. You can come to microphone, state your name, and share your concerns with us, we can consider them.
My name is, my name is David Howes, I'm resident bordering the property. I just have a question, what was presented to you today, the text that was presented today, and the text that is listed on the agenda for today are not the same texts? So they had mentioned the, building the berm within 24 months and such today, I'm wondering which text is the official text that will be guiding going forward?
When was this, Steve, when was this submitted? Have y'all had a chance to review what we got today?
Um, yes, sir, so it was submitted after the planning board meeting with the recommended changes. Unfortunately, there was a mix-up with the upload for the meeting, so I did send over the corrected PD text that you have to the clerk, that way you guys had the corrected text.
This one he just read tonight would be the text?
That is the corrected.
If we have a first reading, it'll be this one?
Yes, sir.
That's what you heard tonight?
Yes, sir.
And that's, I don't think it was 24, I think it was 12 months, I heard.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm nervous, I'm not good at this.
So I think they gotta build that within 12 months.
So, so what was presented is the official text?
Correct.
That was my question.
Can they give us a copy of it?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, and I do apologize for the mix-up.
All right, thank you.
And probably for that reason, sir, just to let you know, if I do entertain a motion to move forward and prove it, we probably won't do the second reading tonight, since the text was just received today, because the board may wanna review that to see if there's any tweaks between now and the next meeting, because we don't wanna be rushed into a decision.
So you don't have this copy?
I, I was given a copy, yes.
Okay, good deal.
Um, actually, I have one more, I'm gonna let that go, thank you.
Thank you.
Regarding the documents, don't, the original documents submitted for the planning board, doesn't that follow the whole process through? None of those documents change?
Well, they have, they, they would, they would change when you vote and say with planning board?
And staff.
And staff recommendations, right?
Correct, but those original documents and submitted documents kinda, that, that follows?
It does, but, but I'm gonna, it gets really tricky when you're talking about a PD.
I agree.
Um, because it's not conditioned in a PD, it's the text that changes, and so we have to kinda amend the text before, and provide something to you and say, and basically you'll be approved, you'll be approving the, the original with the changes.
Yes.
Um, and so it just, it provides a little additional complication because it's a PD.
All right, anyone else like to speak in opposition tonight? Excuse me.
Yeah, from McCrory, first thing is about the berms and the 450 feet. Now, as I said, they say that they have, that they can change the warehouse whenever they want to, or so, I was understanding, and like I say, they're also in the planning board, they brought out new documents before we had time to look over them, and that's why I'm going over them documents now, you, to this week, but I wanna make sure the berm A, B, and C are guaranteed, I mean, it's not, now next week they go in decide they can change warehouses.
That's my understanding, can y'all confirm that?
They said that they can change them.
They're confirming it, we, we've, we've got it in the record now, that it's only that warehouse that's down here, that's way away from?
So they're gonna be guaranteed that they're gonna be built.
Correct, correct.
All right.
And I got your email, and I asked that question to staff.
You say guaranteed, not built, what are you referring to, not built?
To be built.
To be built, the red, the blue, the orange, the purple.
All A, B, C, and D are guaranteed to be built.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure we were.
If?
Yeah, because that 450-foot thing, you know, took me for a loop, yeah.
I got your email, I covered staff today.
They start changing warehouse sizes and all, it could back up from, you know, they get 450 feet away.
I think, I think that's a guarantee.
Mr. Chairman, let me just specify that if the warehouse is built, right? So if they don't build a warehouse on that section?
Correct.
And then they, then they don't have, they don't have to build a berm. If, when they start a warehouse on that, they have to simultaneously build the berm
Within 12 months.
Along with that, so we can't say definitely that they will build a berm, because they could very well decide that, you know what, I'm not gonna build, you know, pass this thing, I'm just gonna leave it, I'm just gonna leave it vacant or whatever, but I just wanna just kinda clarify that language.
Yeah, I think we have to be very comfortable that that one building is gonna sit there without any berms, you know, I mean, as a?
Yeah, this eight- to 10-year project, I'm dealing with, you know, for eight, 10-plus years, could be longer, I mean, market, you know how it goes, I mean, you know, the next thing, I didn't?
What are you talking about, Phil?
That building to the left?
Yeah, the one in the bottom left corner.
Right here.
I'm not saying it will, but, you know, we just have to?
This berm would not be built, because it dislocated this one.
Yeah, yeah.
It's along with the?
He just said, he'll hopefully has it not be built.
Yeah, that could be, it may be a little bit before that.
You just have to be comfortable that that bottom left warehouse could be built with no berms for 10 years, and I'm not saying I'm not, I'm just, just saying.
The next thing I knew, last, remember the last meeting, planning board meeting, they added in about the clearing within the 150-foot buffer area, berm construction must begin, but then you get to reading all the texts, I didn't quite understand it, that, you know, I wasn't sure that if they don't cut the trees in the 150-foot area or text that, they don't have to put the berm up then?
No, they gotta put the berm up.
Exactly when does the berm have to start? You know, it was different writings in there in different sections that kept throwing me off.
Let me ask you before you let the staff correct them wrong, if they break ground to do a, one of those warehouses, immediately they have to begin building that berm, and it has to be completed in 12 months.
Okay, that's one.
And but, and then the other time that they have to build that berm is if, if they are not building a warehouse, and then they start clearing within 150 feet, whether or not they build a warehouse or not?
They still have to build the berm.
They still have to build that berm. So it's kind of, it's, it's either or, it, depending on which it is, so it, it provides additional protection.
And I don't, do we, I don't know if we define construction of when the building starts, but a building pad, even though it's dirt, is that considered a beginning of construction?
Well, they, they would have to, yeah, I mean, they, they would have to present, yeah, they, they would have to prevent, present the plan to us, and once we do that, we would then trigger the building of the berm. Yeah, the building permit is gonna trigger that.
So they can build a building pad without a building permit?
It's gotta be easier.
But that's part of your civil plan, I mean, that's part of your, your?
Well, and?
I'm not complicating it, I'm just trying to?
That's what I wanna understand, you know, when, when does this have to, when they have to start doing stuff, you know?
Well, for sure.
It's complicated trying to read different?
For sure.
Paragraphs will say different things.
If they disturb that 150-foot, right, they have to build the?
Yeah, so no matter what, if they disturb 150 feet, they're gonna have to put a berm there, it doesn't matter if they're starting a building or not.
Yeah, but they could be putting a pad out there without disturbing the 150-foot.
So one thing in the LDA?
Okay. All right, the, so if we do it by the land disturbance activity permit, is that?
Yeah, and we should probably get a development permit for that.
I don't know, it's lingo, so, you know, I'm just trying to get clarification.
I tell you what, hold that and come up with an idea.
We'll read one piece.
I've got some ideas.
Yeah, well, let's, let's get through the public hearing, and then we'll try to address the concerns. I've got some ideas. Yeah, well, let's, let's get through the public hearing and then we'll try to address the concerns they have.
The, the other thing i- i- is the buffer we have now. What has, for eight to 10 years, what, where does that buffer go? I mean, cause you know, there's a buffer in between that, where the warehouses that's existing a- and that land, which is our buffer for us. You know, understand what I'm saying? There, there's a 300 foot buffer in between their property they want to develop and the warehouses.
No, no, industrial, between industrial does not have a 300 foot buffer.
Right now, cause it's, it's, uh, apartments or whatever it's on for. So there's a.
That would, that would, that would.
There's a buffer there.
Correct. And so if you're talking about the land in between your property line, uh, and, uh, and right when you cross your property line?
No, I'm talking about.
He's talking about between the two industrial properties now.
The industrial and, uh, the land that they want to make industrial.
He's talking between the north and south.
There's a buffer in between.
That won't impact you and that's not a buffer we're, we're considering.
That's our buffer right now. I mean, that's our buffer for us.
Well, it, it, it won't be your buffer with this. It's not even a part of this issue.
Yeah, but it's, it's, that's, there's nothing there except for trees. I mean.
It doesn't impact, it doesn't impact you.
Cause it has to be there right now because the apartments, you know, it has to be a buffer there.
If this is approved, it gets approved. Sir, hang on. Just don't waste time. If, if this gets approved, the only buffer that'll be approved will be that, uh, 450 and the 150 with the berm.
Yeah, that's what that goes away.
Yep.
Uh, I think the batch plant, I think y'all kinda answered for me. I would, I already didn't know what a batch plant was, you know, back, when the planning board thing was going on. I had to go back and research. You know, and I think y'all addressed that by moving it or putting the berm up.
Yes, we got that. We're gonna address that with condition.
The other thing, uh, about the, is the drainage. You know, all our property drains that land. And I know they're gonna put the berm there, but i- if they don't put the proper drainage through the berms, who addresses that? They make them correct it or, or, or who do we see?
That's part of the land dis- land disturbance process. There'll be coverage through the berm. There'll be a ditch. That's why we had the 15, is it 15 or 30 feet?
I know that, but, but.
Is it 15 or 30 feet on the side of the berm where they put the ditch in the road?
Yeah. So the, the first 35 feet is undisturbed. Um, then there is a 15th, uh, foot, which is, uh, basically used a, as a, as a drainage ditch, uh, so water can continue to flow in there, but it's also used as a, um, as a way to service that drainage ditch to keep it clear. Uh, and then through the berm itself, um, the way that it will be designed, um, is that, uh, the water will essentially flow through the, um, penetration points, uh, where there'll be pipes through the, through the berm.
So the berm will not hold the water on this side. It'll be able to go to the ditch where it comes off of Goshen Hills, off of the berm.
And we will, we will review the design of it.
Having those pipes or whatever and it's not.
It goes under the.
And it saturates our land like Alice is having problems with now.
It goes under the berm and goes to their detention. Yeah. And, and I understand DOT, is it DOT that's putting in, um, some piping on 21 that should help with the drainage as well?
In the front? Yeah.
Because all the warehouses I'm seeing now have drainage problems. I call Goshen Hills extension. I don't know what, probably road is because the Old Augusta from us. You know, all the ponds overflow when it rains. They got a pump out, a pumping one out to the street and to the sewage.
Hopefully, with, with the design and the engineers looking at it, that water will not back up on, on the, on the neighborhood. It's not supposed to. That's the, that's the plan, the design.
When it, if it does, who addresses this issue? Who do we go to to address it or, to get, you know, our land from being saturated?
Well, if, if it's during the construction, which this is gonna take a while to construct, and so we'll probably see if there's any negative effects during that time, they'll have to address it.
Yeah.
Uh, by code enforcement, uh, immediately. So.
Who do I? If I'm having a problem to call, TM, or who do I call?
You can call the county during the construction.
That's right.
Call the county construction.
That's right.
And we got a couple more minutes. You got something else? We'll give somebody else some time.
Number six, number 10 on industrial, an industrial district, uh, the recycle plant. Uh, I wish that could be scratched or something be done. He's got out there that he can pile unrecycled waste 25 feet high outside the building.
What's that?
He said that.
Do you wanna address that? I'm, I don't remember that.
Yeah, that could be expelled rodents.
Yeah, he's asking a question about a recycle plant?
That's the number 10.
Come to the microphone if you can address that, Mr. Murray.
And we talk, excuse me, industrial district, districts and the uses in the districts that we went over in.
The uses now.
Excuse me?
Yeah, you're talking about permitted uses.
Permitted uses, which is that's, that's just what's in the ordinance right now. We don't have, we've got a 25 foot tall berm that's uphill from any house. Then between whatever we build has got to be outside or southeast of that berm. And that we could have material that is based on what the, I understand that's just a quote. That's not a change that we've made.
Yeah, that's a permitted use if it becomes industrial. All we were trying to do tonight is if we're gonna change this PD text because the residents did not want the hundreds or whatever of apartments and housing and cars and double deckers right 35 feet from their property. My understanding for the previous, here, my understanding for the previous discussion was that it sounded like the constituents agreed that with the 25 foot berm, they'd rather get rid of the light and the noise and not have all those cars. So once it gets industrial, there are permitted uses they would be able to do. I don't think they'd impact you because of the berm and everything they're doing there. So. All right, that's all, that's not gonna answer your question. All right, we down to the last minute. Is anyone else?
I thought that was the last, the last planning board, I mean, board meet we had, you was gonna scratch the, that, I suppose one, one scratched.
We can see if the board has, wants to discuss that tonight when they get to it. Make for your concern. Oh, we got about.
The recycling, I think we decided there had to be indoors and not.
I thought it was too. We can talk about that when it comes, when it comes our time.
That's correct. I was gonna bring that up, yeah.
Yeah, I, I remember being indoors. So we can talk about that when it's our turn to talk.
I'm sorry. David Howes, I'd like to ask one more question. On section four buffers, uh, letter G says, except for the undisturbed buffer section, perimeter buffers may include use of berms, fencing, planting, or a combination of these methods as developed, as determined by the developer, subject to approval by the county manager. Essentially, this is, would say that, uh, it's a minor change, um, to the buffer. Under the plan development text, um, any changes to the buffer along the project's external bo- boundary would be considered a substantial change. I would like for, um, you to consider making any future changes if that was to happen, a substantial change instead of a minor change.
We'll consider that. But if they stay with the 25 foot vegetated berm, I can trust our staff to make sure that it's so minor that it wouldn't need to come back before us. I'm more interested in that 25 foot berm with vegetation.
Agreed.
And a good drainage.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thanks for the comments on both sides. I'm gonna open it to the board to have some discussion and, and, uh, questions and we may have some conditions. We want to look to see if the.
Now I got two, two major war deals I want to try to deal with. One being, is that commercial building on 21 or is that an industrial building on 21?
Industrial.
So we, originally we only had commercial along there. So.
Pivotal.
You want to come to the mic to ask these questions? Cause I too am concerned. I, I don't want to see industrial on 21. Um, we, we, we did not approve the study for the quarter.
It's become very, commercial not really happening from Goshen Hill down to the county line. And it became very crucial that we have had discussions with people of industrial, it's a small two, 300 square feet.
Two 20.
Two 20, that because of getting the driveway in and bringing the road in and everything, that that would be a very desirable for a small little warehouse. And we were discussing putting a berm, well, we already have a little small berm, but instead of being 25 feet, I think we're 75 feet? Off of 21, giving a wider buffer for 21 to, to put more trees and more, uh, you know, trees and buffering. So you won't see it like off of Old Augusta Road where you see just the building right there. We're gonna put more vegetation and, but it is very really crucial that this is approved with that because we have people that are interested, but you have that piece and then you have to go across the wetland to develop the rest. And that has kinda been something that has been asked to.
In, in the south, uh.
Recommended that.
Part of this commercial on the front of 21 now? Has that changed?
No, that has not changed. No, the, the south gets the, um, is still the commercial frontage. They haven't, they haven't requested change.
In fact, a lot of those have been sold as commercial already. And that was a concern with being, you know, commercial, 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 and then all of a sudden you got industrial right there.
I, I hear you. And I think the project is great for helping the residents and not have the noise of all the housing. And I think it's good to get as mid-square footage, but I, I'm really concerned about any of that corridor having warehousing on the corridor of 21. We're trying to stay away from that image. I think the, if you had the commercial there, you would even probably see. That becomes a great buffer. You wouldn't even see the warehousing behind it.
You can see the, you can see the truck park from 21 now. From, you can see the warehouses in the truck park of the south.
Well, you can, but when they get the commercials, it's gonna be more difficult to see. A lot more difficult.
This is crucial.
They make a more tractable corridor. And that's one thing we're, we're concerned about.
If I can't get someone to, to build an industrial there, you almost get back to the point, the residential is best. It's a balance.
That's fine. If you can do residential, you can do it. You got that.
I know, but what is, we really need that to be a little industrial building.
It may be a problem. It'd be a problem for me. I'll be honest with you. I, I, I'm real interested in that corridor. I hear it coming all the time. Let's don't become a Port Wentworth. I don't want to put down Port Wentworth and have all these warehouses on our main corridor. And here we are, set a PD that allowed for commercial along 21, and now we're looking at get, getting rid of that. Um, I think it would still be a very beneficial project, but you have to make that decision. If this board should choose to, to remain that as commercial, that'd be a condition I'd ask them to do to approve it tonight. But they may, they may be fine with it all being industrial. I'm just telling you how the chairman feels.
Well, I think y'all had a comprehensive plan showing industrial from 21 all the way to the railroad tracks.
He, he, he's talking about the, um, uh, the, the future land use map. Um, we, we had that area as industrial and commercial corridor.
Correct.
Um, so, um, that's one of the corrections we're gonna do because they conflict. Um, uh, and so.
And our new policy map is not showing, it's, it's still, it'd be commercial on the front, right?
It's, no, it's, it, that's the thing. It conflicts. It shows, it shows it as.
That's why we thought we were able to go with the industrial because we saw that.
But then the commercial corridor will require commercial. So, uh, there, there is a little bit of conflict on the map that we have to clarify. That we have to make the frontage of all commercial corridors show as commercial.
And that's just my thoughts. And we're having the board discussion now. If you can stay there if I have any questions for you, okay?
Wait, excuse me, cause.
Yeah, we, we, on the board discuss and if they want to hear more from you, they can ask you.
Well, the question about the, what you're just referring to on page 10, additional conditions E. What we were proposing is not just an industrial building. It's taking the 50 foot buffer, landscape buffer and making it 75 feet up feet and making it 50% more trees.
He explained that. Yeah, he explained that.
Excuse me.
We spent an enormous amount of time, the boards, the constituents, working on this thing, trying to get something suitable. And these people protected, you know, have no problem with what you guys are doing. It, it, it's great, but it seems like we're rewriting our ordinances every time we come up here. You guys presented sound tests that work in, so, so we could move forward with it. Those sound tests blocks all this, this noise, but now we're kinda teetering back and forth on where we want to put berms or not. For me, I think we'd have to have the berms in place no matter what. Whether you have a building 450 feet or 300 feet, I don't care about all that. I care about protecting those, those, those people. If you can't do that, I can't support it. And I want to go back to our berm. We've created one. We've got one now, uh, that is an ordinance. We go to, go with our ordinance berm and go the entire length of the property and protect those people. You got concrete plant you're gonna put up. You got trucks coming in and out all the time. I think it's imperative that we have the berm there. We've done it in the past. There's no reason why we can't do it now. If we want to put something on residential, we need to put a berm there regardless. So if we're prepared to do that, I can stand behind it. If you can't, I cannot stand behind this project. Furthermore, I'd like to see that berm up before we do any foundations. If we could do that, would be good.
Well, he's telling us if you, if you do it, you do it with land disturbance permit and then that way.
That would be for that. I wouldn't have a problem even waiting till, till that, but then as you're, you're, you're gonna have dirt anyway. A berm is dirt. You're gonna be, it's a lot cheaper to keep it on site than it is to remove it, as everybody knows. So I'd like the berm to be built and protect those people no matter what. If you, even if you don't have a building there, there's gonna be an enormous amount of noise there, not only during the construction, but when this thing is finished. There needs to be a berm to protect those neighborhoods. We've done it in other places. I'd like to see us continuing to do that and protect those people. Everything else I could, I could, I could personally live with. Uh, I'm on the fence about the commercial part. I don't know how the commissioners feel about that part of it.
Well, that, that kinda caught me off guard because that was gonna be commercial. That's just another change that. I thought the berm was the issue. I think we've kind of addressed it. And now that, now we gotta deal with this. It's just all these changes. I, I'm on board with Wesley. I personally believe that needs to stay commercial, but.
Clarify for me what you're, what you're asking on the, on the berm. So you're saying that you would like to see, I guess if one building starts and you would want to see all four berms built?
Yeah.
At, at one time?
Right. That way during the construction phase, I mean, you could stagger that as long as we have a full berm when we're, when we're doing that. Like if they were gonna build the first couple of buildings and they bermed up, I wouldn't have a problem with that. My main focus is to protect those people, but I wouldn't want them building two buildings, doing two berms, and then they have a concrete plant, you know, halfway in between there and you get all that noise. It's one.
Well, yeah.
Some kind of mechanism.
Yeah, I definitely agree with, uh, what was presented earlier that if, you know, if we build, I guess the third berm, the orange berm, and you put the, uh, mobile plant, the batch plant behind that, it's behind a berm. But just what I keep thinking about is, you know, do we have townhomes with 35 foot buffer and nothing? Or do we go industrial and we got a 25 foot vegetated berm? I think in the long run, the industrial route is, definitely protects the people more, in my opinion. Um. Obviously, everything's about cost, but I, you know, I mean, if, if, if you build, if you build building two back there in the corner and you build berm A, which has that surrounded, I mean, that, that building is covered. I don't know if really berm two, three, and four.
Well, they have to build a berm at the batch plant also.
Well, that's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Build a berm at the batch plant.
I'm good with the progressive part of the berm.
I am too, I think. I think I'm good with progressive part.
As long as that batch plant, once they start that, uh, it's gotta be a berm.
If the batch plant.
Still have a stipulation in there that says if it's 450 feet away and for some reason that, that, you know, th- these wetlands, have they been delineated with the core?
Uh, they have, they've submitted to the.
Have, have they been approved yet? And, and.
The only one that could be built, the way I read the text now, without a berm is that far left that's way off the track.
Right.
Then why do we need everything else?
Be a berm for the batch plant.
Huh?
If they go put a batch plant on building.
But there's a caveat in there for that 450 feet. If there's a building not within that 450 feet spot, they can omit that berm and all that noise can go in there.
I, hey, I, I, I hear you on that, on that part.
That's what I worry about. I'd rather, I'd rather get rid of that, stick with our ordinance that we already have and what we've been doing. Build the berm or don't, don't do the, do the project.
But I, okay, I, I, I definitely, I'm, I'm with you on the 450 feet and we'll have to figure that part out, but just.
We got an idea on that.
I wanna, I wanna be fair on both sides. I mean, I, I think the 25 foot vegetated berm, I think that's a generous offer on protection for the residential side. But then also building a, God, I don't know how long that is. I, I'm sure the engineers probably said it before, um, add the numbers up there, but I mean, to, to build that all at one time, I just don't know how feasible that is because if you're building a warehouse on the far left side. I mean, to, to build that all at one time, I just don't know how feasible that is, because if you're building a warehouse on the far left side, you may not know where your other warehouse is gonna go, but you gotta take a chunk of dirt out of the side on the right, so, I mean, that may not make much sense.
How could we do it where everything gets burnt, the berm gets building in its entirety? But you would do it in the phases which made sense with the buildings. I'd, I'd be cool with that.
That's what they're proposing. But, but that's what they're proposing. Is as, as they build the buildings, they're gonna have a berm.
Caveat to that with that four fifty.
Let me make, let me make a suggestion, see if it's worth, those three, and this, we're gonna come back if we do this and we'll ask and see if you accept it. But if either of those three, the one that is four fifty away, if either of those three are built, you could say that that berm has to be built. Cause I do get it, I see a detention pond possibly there, that could open up a lot of noise to the residents there. So you could say if any one of those three, that goes to berm A, and the next one, uh, building, I don't know what it is, but maybe berm B. And then when the concrete plant's in, that's the orange, that berm has to be built, and vice versa. I wouldn't want to make them do the whole thing, but I do get that we could remove the four fifty possibly, if they'd accept it, and say if you build either, any of those three, that first berm has to be built.
And Roger, I agree with you. I mean, that, that back line, I agree, that whole piece they have shaded, I mean, that, that berm needs, needs to be there.
Just concerned with the tameness and the, and I'm, I'm fine with that. We just, we gotta get them protected at some point. Cause it, like, in the middle where there's just parking, there's gonna be, you know, there's no building there, but there's gonna be a lot of noise. And I'm glad there's berms there, but, you know, the way that, I read that and the way that was written, if you take building, what is it, three hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet, number one, two, three from the, from highway twenty-one, say that thing moved away from the property line four hundred and fifty feet, then he doesn't have to build that berm according to what this says. That's what I'm concerned with.
You're saying if this sketch plan, if they put the pond on the other side and moves the building, okay, I see what you're saying.
Exactly. Then there, there are no berms, so I, I think we need to close that loop.
But if you do, I just said that would close that gap.
Just get rid of the four fifty altogether, and, and.
If you build, building one, two, or three, berm A would need to be built. We'll need to get, see if they would accept that. Then the rest would follow. If you build, build building four, berm B would be built.
So it would be understood the whole berm would be built, but you could look at these different color codes as stages.
That's what they're doing, yeah. That's what.
Well, no, that's not all they're doing according to this. It's four fifty, you don't have to build.
No, what Roger's saying is, if they flip this, say where the pond is behind those three, and they flip the pond and put it on the other side and build the building over there, they could possibly be four hundred and fifty feet away, and then they don't have to build a berm without worrying.
No, I understand. That's why I'm removing the, just remove the four fifty, and say if you build either of these three buildings.
Right.
You build the berm. And then if you build building four, you build a berm. If you put the concrete plant in, you build a berm.
Then at least we're, we're covering constituents we got. If you guys are okay with that, I'd be, I'm not trying to come and undo, that's a good point, Jamie.
Definitely reference to drawing, so we all say.
I appreciate that, cause you speak the concrete portion of that.
We're gonna go to the front end, if we do any at all. So we'll have a chance to come back and make sure we have got it correct to our staff.
I don't, as far as the building up front, I mean, the one, I know before, I thought it was a commercial. I don't really have a strong opinion either way on that, but, you know, I, I, I think we're more the right ways on the berm. Not, don't make them do the whole entire thing at one time.
But we get the, we would get the whole.
Eventually, yeah, the end product would be the whole berm.
That's the biggest thing for me. If they're gonna be generating the noise, we already know how bad it is from the sound test, let's cover it up.
So what's the thought on the, uh, front, gentlemen, the, uh?
The front, the commercial, is that gonna be like flex space or a, another warehouse just like these, just smaller? Say again?
I didn't say it. They'll do commercial up there. He said they would do, do commercial.
Okay.
Well, I know we've talked about this a lot, but I mean, as far as all that, we get the whole berm built. I mean, it, it seems that everything else is, as we've discussed through all the planning board meetings, commissioner meetings, town hall meetings, I mean, unless I'm missing something, Roger, but I mean, it seems like everything we talk about has, has been addressed.
And I appreciate the, the commercial, cause we, we just agreed to spend a fair amount of money on a study for, study for the twenty-one corridor in that area.
We don't want to damage it before we get the study completed.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I do too. Thank you. Well, I think, um, with that discussion, if it's no discussion, I'm gonna try to put something down, and if a spokesperson will come, so you can see if you could accept these things. Um, and board, help me with this. Um, first of all, we're gonna ask that, uh, this condition be put on, that the text in this be changed, so that the four fifty goes away, and if building one, two, or three is built, berm A would be built.
Correct.
Okay, and you, you.
Correct, yes.
Accept that part. That would be the one condition. The other would be that, at the time that a L D A permit is, um, uh, issued for any of these buildings or areas, that's when the berm would begin, twelve months would begin for the permit, for the, for, for the berm to be built.
We, no, we can't live with that.
Okay.
If we want to go in there and put a utility in, or put a road in that's outside the hundred and fifty feet, and we're not touching the hundred and fifty feet.
I understand what you're saying.
But it's not issuing the permit, it should be when we start the clearing process, cause we could get the permit, and six months later, we still haven't started clearing on it. We don't want to be forced, once we have a permit in hand, to go start building the berm.
I'm with you, that's fair enough. So, but basically then when they, if they touch that hundred and fifty foot, or start working on a pad.
Correct.
That's when they would need to build the berm.
On page eight, number five, under additional conditions, it says, as shown on exhibit E.
Wait, 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 excuse me, just a second, let me get to it. Page eight, what now? Number five?
Page eight, number five. And I think this clears up what the gentleman was saying earlier, or further shows the example. As shown on exhibit E, berm shall begin construction in tangent with correlating land disturbance activity, and be completed prior to the issuance, issuance of a certificate of occupancy for their corresponding building. So I think that.
Thing is covered, really.
That addresses the question we were discussing.
That, that, that hammers it.
I think that hammers it pretty good. I'm, I'm good with that. So, so there is no additional condition there. There's just the, uh, if building one, two, and three begin in this area, any development, that berm is, or land disturbed.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just, just a second. Would you, could you come up here and explain what your interpretation of what they just said is, cause you, they're not gonna be in the field. You are. One of your staff people is gonna be in the field.
I like going in too, man, okay.
So, say it again, please.
If you look at your picture up there, building one, two, and three.
No, no, I'm, excuse, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we're talking about the, uh, five on, on page eight, and the land disturbing.
Oh, I don't think we're changing anything there.
Right, but what, so what does it say? So we're all in the same place?
I mean, read it again.
Yeah, read it again, please.
As shown on exhibit E, berm shall begin construction in tangent with correlating land disturbance activity, and be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for their corresponding building.
So, yes, so for us, that's a land disturbing activity permit. That's what we issue, that's called L D A.
But it's when we hit the ground that we have the twelve month start. Is that?
Yeah, you gotta move something.
Yeah.
When you start moving the.
You gotta move something.
It isn't just issue the permit in, in this building somewhere.
No, I got.
Yes, yes.
I wanted to read that, cause I thought that was.
This is gonna sound dumb.
So, silk fencing, we gotta, we gotta, service gotta.
Service has to happen, okay. All right, thank you, thank you.
And from that point, it starts, because if, let's say by this, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, that's when the warehouse is built.
Finished.
Finished.
But that's when it has to be, that's when they have to finish.
I've gotta finish the berm to get a C O.
I want it, but you could build it, not ask for that, then build the berm at a, at a, I mean, you should build it at the same time, but that's the whole point. wording counts.
You know, I've got, but go to the, the next sentence. Under no circumstances may clearing be performed close to a hundred and fifty feet without the berm, applicable berm being built, is it?
Right, that's just saying you're gonna leave the hundred and fifty-foot buffer in place.
When any clearing commences, it requires the construction of a berm, which, which is when I'd start building a building, which is the, the L D A is issued. The applicable berm shall be completed within twelve months.
C five six.
Right, how long's it gonna take you to build a warehouse?
How big is the warehouse?
I don't know.
I don't, excuse me, just a second.
Is the berm gonna be there in place? If you're gonna start clearing it, with the berms, and as, as you're clearing, you're gonna be building the berm, is the warehouse going up and all that racket at the same time as the berms being built? Or is the berm gonna be there, and then there's construction on the, the?
But one thing you've got to think about is.
That's the reason I'm asking.
You're, you're, you're not, you're not gonna spend all that money to have a completed building, and then you gotta start building the berm to get your C O. Cause you're wanting to either lease it or sell it as quick as you can. So that's gonna be motivation for them to be building berm with the building.
Again, this is typically what we'd do.
And as Mr. Burdette, Mr. Burdette said, the dirt that's moved for the building is what, gonna be put on the berm, cause that's the efficient way to use that dirt. Not go offsite and buy the dirt, build berm, and then what do you do with the dirt?
Yeah.
Digging the detention ponds and all that. But they all go simultaneously.
There's a little pain with every surgery, and, uh, I think if the berm, and the way it was here, if it's gonna be done in twelve months, I think we're gonna do the best we can do to protect the constituents and give them what they want.
Right.
Not apartments, but a big berm to protect them from the noise and the lights.
I'm on board, I just.
Yeah, I know what you mean, it's a lot of stuff.
There's been so many twists and turns here, I want to ask.
Okay.
Mr. Marshall, you're okay with, with us stating that you will build the berm in entirety?
Yes.
Just to do, okay.
Yes.
What, what did you just?
What, no, in sections, excuse me.
In sections, not on all the same time, but, but the whole thing.
What we, excuse me, let me, let me, let me.
Section time, alright.
We have exhibit.
We gotta move on, let's simplify this.
The exhibit, though, has it in sections, A, B, C, D.
Ms. Murray, we got it, we got it. We gotta move on.
It'll be clear on that. It's not, it's clear as mud on here for me.
I'm sorry.
So, to the text right now, and we can perfect it, so the second reading, we miss something, okay? We gotta get this done tonight. If we're gonna, if we're gonna do it, if not, we can do something different. But, for first condition, if building one, two, or three in that area that's here, there will be, berm A will be built.
Correct.
Okay. The other condition is that they would, uh, not change the, the industrial on the front, which remain commercial.
Correct.
Okay, that's the only two conditions I've heard that I can solidify. You got something else?
Uh, the, the berm with regards to the, um.
And the berm would be built with the concrete plant, uh, before it's active?
The applicable section of the berm, based on where the concrete plant is located, would be built before the concrete plant can be activated. That's a case where we're gonna have to find dirt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To be, be able to build that berm.
Gotcha, that was well said.
But we're not gonna build the concrete plant unless we got a building on site, cause we can't sell the concrete offsite.
Yeah, don't muddy it. You gotta, you, you said it perfect.
Okay.
And so the clerk can take that, that wording for our condition that he just read, okay, from the recording.
And I would think digging the retention ponds themselves would generate dirt for berms and everything during, they're in that phase, that's why, that's why I was asked for the whole thing up front. I think you would have so much just from the infrastructure.
Okay.
You could do a lot. You may build more than what you think you're gonna build.
Business to do tonight. So we got three conditions that we've listed, and those are all acceptable to you. We're gonna do a second reading next week, so if we miss something up, you can correct it next time we get together.
I, I do want to state something, and it's not a stipulation at all. Um, I know Ms. Hurst next door's had issues with her water, and I told her I would bring this up, just to, I feel like that's gonna be addressed when y'all do the hydrology, uh, report and all on that, but I wanna, you know, try to alleviate any concerns that you may or may not be causing her. I don't know. I'm not a, an engineer, but, uh.
We have not heard from her lately, but within the last couple of weeks, Mr. Exley went out and, oh, there was a beaver dam that had been built out there, and they build them all over the darn place. Um, and when they do, they're gonna back up water, but Mr. Exley went out and cleared, cleared that out.
And we're gonna.
I'm not, I don't know, I'm just.
We're not intentionally gonna back water up on anybody.
And we're gonna move on, and we're gonna see what the D O T, uh, new drains they're doing under twenty-one's gonna help.
The water doesn't go that way. I believe it comes back.
Well, some of that's gonna help her. Some of that's gonna help. I, I talked to Allison. She believes some of, she's not sure it's gonna be the whole thing, yeah. Alright, so we got the three additional stipulations. Is there a motion to, uh, I'll try for a motion to approve first, with the planning board, uh, recommendations and staff, plus these three stipulations, and I'm, I'm gonna try to say, we'll reiterate them at the next meeting, okay?
So moved.
Alright, let me get back to my agenda, where'd it go?
And we will have a good, clean copy for the second reading, right?
Yeah, we're ahead. Puppy wants to come back, we'll make sure those conditions are read and enforced. Alright, so we have a motion by, tell me who made the motion again, let's see where we're at.
Thursday?
It was me.
Thursday, okay. Before the end of the week, we are getting together with staff, and we will go through this document in detail and get one prepared. Yes, we don't want it to be tail end, but at last minute either.
Alright, motion made, Roger, was second by Mr. Floyd. We, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. We're gonna wait the second reading, make sure we got those three additional stipulations. I think we've got something that's good, hopefully for you guys and for our constituents, and maybe found some good compromise here tonight. Thank you so much, everybody who was involved.
Thank y'all.
So we won't do the second reading now, we'll do the, uh, eleven, I don't know, number eleven in the public hearing. The planning board recommends approving an application by William, uh, Schaffner, uh, to rezone two of eight point one-six acres located one sixty-five Broward Court from A R one to A R two, to allow for the subdivision to create a new home site, map number thirty-nine, three ninety-eight C, parcel number eleven in the second district.
Yes, sir. So the applicant is proposing to rezone the parcels, um, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong. The applicant is requesting to subdivide their property to create two one-acre parcels, uh, for their children. Um, a sixty-foot access, private access easement will, will be utilized for one of the parcels. Um, the applicant, uh, is requesting, uh, the A R two, uh, zoning, um, as the new parcels do fall under that five-acre threshold. Uh, staff and planning board recommend alternative number one.
Thank you. Anyone tonight speaking in opposition, opposition to this rezoning request? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any discussion among the board, or do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve, staff, planning board, recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. So we can do the second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by William Schaffner to rezone two point, excuse me, two acres out of eight point one-six acres, located one sixty-five Broward Court from A R one to A R two, to allow for a subdivision to create a new home site. Map number three ninety-eight C, parcel number eleven in the second district. Motion?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Deloach, approve the second reading. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. Excuse me. I'm number thirteen. Planning board recommends approving an application by Penny West to rezone five acres located thirty-seven sixty-eight Old Dixie Highway South from A R one to A R two, to allow for a new home site, map number, uh, three thirty-nine, parcel number six in the third district.
Yes, sir. So the applicant is proposing to subdivide the property. In doing so, um, the parcel will no longer be conforming A R one lot, um, and will need to be rezoned to A R two. Um, this parcel is currently served by private well and septic. Um, the future land use map does have this parcel projected as agriculture, um, and staff and planning board are recommending alternative number one.
And it's actually one home site, correct?
Um, right now, it is one home site. Um, the applicant would like to create, um, it will be four total.
Okay.
Alright, we have, uh, we've opened a, uh, public hearing. Anyone speaking in opposition to this request tonight? Seeing no one coming forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do you have some follow-up questions on that?
Yeah, um, reading the packet, I thought it was just gonna be one, one home site, so they want to break this up into four?
Yes, sir. So, um, that is the proposed plan for this.
You want to speak to the questioner?
Are they here?
Yes, I think this was.
Can the microphone, he may have some questions for you.
Hey, I was just curious, so what, is this for family members, or?
No, sir, it'll be for rentals.
For rentals, okay. And the reason why I ask that, cause I know, I'm not aware of any rentals in this area. And I know before, we had had one on Orange Dorf Road, kind of same scenario that we, we denied, so I'm not.
Yeah, usually it's a slam dunk if it's for, uh, a, a house for a family member, or you, you know, if just a friend, but.
I'd be willing to tape, I mean, make a motion to table it, I mean, see, look more into it, so I wouldn't.
Three, we could do three.
As long as she's within the. As long as she's within the, I guess.
The issue is four or?
Yeah, but most of the parcels there are AR, I know AR one and it's residential property.
Yes, sir. So here's what the, uh, zoning map looks like. Um, so AR two is consistent with, um, you know, surrounding zonings, um. Right, so.
Homes or mobile homes?
Mobile homes. And it would be, um, looking at the site plan here, it would be the parent parcel, which is that first one that fronts onto Old Dixie Highway, and then the three, um, parcels in the back. So your parent parcel and then three parcels behind it.
And that's one in the subdivision regulations?
Yes, sir.
I mean.
No, this is on a private route?
It's private easement.
Private easement, yeah.
I'm just gonna stay consistent with the route I went on Orange Dorf Road. I mean, I don't know how y'all feel, but that's, that's just where I'm at, so.
Yeah, my, my assumption is not what we're having tonight, so if you, if you'd like some more time to review that, I think the board would give you latitude on that to have, it's only one meeting. We might wanna look at, since we contemplated the use of this property.
Alright, I'll make a motion, um, to table it to our next meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette to table to, what's the day of the next meeting?
Three nineteen, I believe.
Three nineteen?
Make sure.
Uh, any question before I call for a vote?
No, I, I, I don't have a problem, you know, doing that to.
All in favor of table to, to, uh, um, three nineteen, say aye? Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. Um, we're gonna table it and let the commissioner of that area and let's discuss it from that standpoint. And that, we didn't hear any objection from the communities, which is your favor, but it would hurt, would hurt us to give us a couple of weeks to review that.
Do you need any other information from me?
Um, I'll let the.
Commissioner Deloach can get with staff.
Get with staff and, and, and reach out to you to see if there's some things we need to answer in question, okay? Alright, thank you so much for your time.
And the, and the next meeting will be a five PM meeting.
Five PM.
Yes, that'll come up in old business. That will be at the beginning.
Thank you for that reminder.
Yeah.
Phil, I appreciate it. Um, so we won't do the second reading, obviously, we'll go to item fifteen, our last public hearing tonight. Planning board recommends approving an application by Samuel Bradford to rezone five acres located eight hundred Savannah Town Road from AR one to AR two to allow for new home sites, um, map number two forty-six, parcel number eleven A in the third district.
Yes, sir. So like the previous one, um, the applicant is requesting to subdivide the parcel to create new home sites. Uh, this however is for his children. Um, the applicant is aware that according to the National Wetlands Inventory, there are significant wetlands on this property, um, and that a wetlands delineation would be needed for any construction, um, for, uh, homes being built. Um, staff and planning board recommend alternative number one.
We'll open the public hearing. Anyone speaking tonight in opposition to this rezoning request? Anyone speaking in opposition? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing and see if there's any discussion among the board.
Yeah, Chelsea, that answered my question, cause I, I'd gotten a question about that, with, with it already showing it was in the flood plain, you know, would we go ahead, since it was so much, some of the entire lots are showing in the flood plain, would we rezon it? So, but I guess rezoning is rezoning, and then that's up to the owner to go through the due process and see if they're able to do it.
Yes, sir, and we had, um, the applicant and I had an extensive conversation about the wetlands, um, and what that entails. Um, and he is under, um, he knows exactly what that means, and, uh, he does have the list of wetland specialists uh, for when his children are ready to build, um, and he knows what that process, um, will take.
And these plaits are stamped by Department of Public Health, right, that they have not been.
Yes, sir.
Verified.
However, that doesn't guarantee that they will, or, you know, that they, that they.
Absolutely. And.
I just know from the Public Health Department that I chair, we, we made them put that stamp on it so that people, that's the buyer beware. If you just put a plaque out there, they may assume there's a buildable acre, but now each one has a stamp that says this has not been, it's some official language that it has not been checked for buildability.
There are, and there, there, um, environmental health actually has multiple, um, blocks that they can sign, one being, you know, if it is, if it has been tested for, you know, do the perk test, or if it, um, if it can be developed. Um, we also, uh, put the condition that a plat must be approved, uh, by Development Services, um, and then recorded, uh, before the zoning can take place.
Yeah, and that stamp will be on it, so that should be the buyer's beware.
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright. Any other questions? Do you have a motion for alternative one?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, alternative one with staff and planning board recommendations.
Very good. Second. Motion, Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Burdette, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. We can do the second reading then. Consideration to approve a second reading of an application by Samuel Bradford to rezone five acres located eight hundred Savannah Town Road from AR one to AR two to allow for new home sites, uh, map number two forty-six, parcel number eleven A in the third district. Motion?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Burdette, to approve the second reading, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously, and that concludes our public hearings tonight. We're gonna go back over real quickly and see if we have, um, can clean up some administrative items we left off the agenda. Any reports from our commissioners and staff, we'll start with staff. Tim, do you have anything for us tonight?
Sure, I just wanted to, um, say that we're gonna be starting, uh, on the thirteenth of March, um, our first town hall. Uh, it's gonna start off in District One, and we're gonna do it numerically through District, um, Five. Uh, and so, um, we're looking locations, uh, and times for the other ones, so, um, you might hear from Marie or, or Stephanie uh, about trying to, uh, um, schedule this and, and what your, uh, what your ideal schedule is, so just to give you a heads up on that. And I'll provide each of you the copy of what we produced for District One, so we're gonna try and make it specific to the districts. Um, but, you know, obviously we'll put some, uh, significant countywide projects in there as well, so folks can know. That's all I got.
We thank you for your updates you give us on a regular basis by email, which is great.
But we don't have the dates on the others, we just have the date for District One right now.
We just got the first one, and so we're just gonna, we'll probably end up doing them at, you know, at, uh, again at the schools. Um, so it's a matter of scheduling them with your schedule and with the school's schedule.
I know from talking to Nancy, he's pretty much said, you know, we could use the schools, just get, give the individual principals.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Stephanie?
Just encourage you to look at your legislative updates. There is some legislation that's coming through that.
There's some significant stuff out there.
A C C G updates.
Okay, very good. Anything, any rest of the staff? Alright, from our commissioners?
I have nothing.
Alright.
I'm good.
I've covered, man.
Alright, I think I'm good. So if there's nothing else, is there any executive session tonight?
No, but you have minutes to approve.
Okay, alright, so executive session minutes, uh, considerations to approve the February twenty, twenty twenty-four executive session minutes? Any, a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve. Well, I guess we need to look at them first. I was thinking, I was thinking we were approving those, the regular minutes that we had, that we have a copy of.
The attorney has, uh.
My motion stands, but I'm gonna review them and see.
I'm assuming he agrees, or he wouldn't be passing them out?
Put on the next one.
Okay. Yeah, we can do a next one. It's retroactive no matter what, so we're good. Alright, do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
Uh, so moved.
Second. Motion on Mr. Kiefer, second by, uh, Mr. Burdette, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. I believe this concludes our, uh, business for the evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion on Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette to adjourn, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, we are adjourned.